Cable 2.
Good evening and welcome to the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education Work Session for June 8th, 2021. I'm Shay Woodbury, Chair of the School Board. I'm going to go ahead and officially call our meeting to order. I think our board members are present tonight, so we do have a quorum. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
If there are no further questions or discussion, let it be known by aye.
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 Right. I'll go ahead and turn it over to the Finance Committee Chair.
Aye. Finance Committee is going to start. Our members are Leah Crowley, Dana Cottle-Jones, Elizabeth Mott-Singer, Alex Bohannon, and myself. First, we're going to bring up Andrea Gillis and discuss the April financial statements.
Good evening, Chair Woodbury, Vice Chair Calvin Hayes, Board Members, and Ms. McManus. I'm here today to review a couple of things, starting with the April 30th financial statements. So here we have the combined balance sheet. And just FYI, the general fund here is not just local funds. It represents state, local, federal, and other special revenue funds. So it's not just a general fund. I mean, not just the local fund. And as you can see, there's some confusion. We have a fund balance here of $28.7 million. This is not the same fund balance that is the local available fund balance at the end of June. That number is still $6.9 million. That is what the fund balance is normally not calculated till the year-end. This is just what's available right now as of April 30th. And it includes all funds. And there's also some restricted fund balance in there as well. There's restrictions for reserves for inventory, reserves for encumbrances, reserves by state statute, and restricted for specific purpose. So this includes all of the fund balance, but it's not just the unrestricted fund balance that we can spend, you know, that the board will spend, you know, if they deem necessary. So right now, our fund balance, like I said, is $6.9 million. That is what we had left at the end of June 30th per our audited financial statements. This, I anticipate, we'll have a couple more million dollars at the end of this year that will add to that number. So we may have a total fund balance of about $9 million in June this year. But it's not $28 million.
Is that our, like, rainy day fund, also money that if, in case anything happens or it's delayed, that we have to rely on that money to continue?
Right. That's what our unrestricted fund balance is typically used for. If there's something that comes up, we would assign fund balance for that, like something that's not budgeted that we want to, that we would need to do.
And if there was something major happened that we could not get money in quickly, how long would $9 million actually last the school system?
Not very long. It's not even, wouldn't even be one month's worth of expenses.
So it wouldn't, it's not, to me, it sounds like it's not fiduciarily expen-- we need more money and a rainy day fund, too, just in case something major happens up to three months.
There's not really a hard and fast rule for school districts on how much fund balance they should have. I mean, obviously, most, some people say, you know, three months of, like, for Fund Five, like, for a child nutrition, they want them to have three months of fund balance.
Right.
Well, that is, for them, it's not that much money. But for us, three months of, you know, three months of expenses on a $600 million budget is a lot of money. We would not be able to have, you know, you know, 1.5, you know, $150 to $200 million in a fund balance, because it's just not feasible. So I think, you know, where we, where we are now is a good, a good amount of fund balance. We probably would like to have more just in case things come up, because, you know, obviously, things do happen. When COVID hit, obviously, the state stepped in and did something, you know, and helped out. But there are some times where the state will not step in. So we would, we would want to have some fund balance available just in case there are things that happen, there are expenses that happen, you know, that could be, you know, something that happens and, you know, we have to wait for an insurance check. Like, if you had insurance, we would want to tap into the fund balance to that, until that insurance check comes in, if we needed, like, fix something right away.
Andrea, or Ms. Gillis, we, it used to be listed in here for fund balance. A line under it was restricted, and then under that was available.
Right.
Would you mind including that again, just so that people don't think we're sitting on $20 million?
Yes. When we present this again, I will present this to say, what is the, what is the available fund balance and then restricted fund balance? I will break it out. I just, I've been, I have been upping it together, because it's kind of hard to break out all of the, you know, it's like a bunch of different things in there. It's like restricted for encumbrances, restricted for, you know, state stabilization. But I will break it out for you for the next time.
And it was just, it didn't specify what it was restricted for. It's just, there were two things underneath. One was restricted, one was available.
Okay. All right. I will break it out for you in the future. But as I said before, $6.9 is our available fund balance, because we can't spend, fund balance is not recognized until the year-end, because you can't count on it in April, because it may not be there.
This was for the last, the last year was $6.9.
The last year, right. Okay. Next, we have our Statement of Revenue and Expenditures and Encumbrances. As you can see, we have, we're a little bit lower for the revenues received, but, I mean, I think we are going to be getting those revenues in. I think the county is going to give us additional funds for the 112 allocation. I think they were a little bit behind on that, for the additional funds that we got for the sales tax revenue. Yes, ma'am? You have a question?
I want to ask you about something on this page.
Okay, okay. And as far as expenses go, we're pretty much in line. We're a little bit lower than where we were last year, but so are the revenues, so.
So under ancillary services, the community services, I just want to know if you could explain to me what that is. I mean, I know it sounds kind of self-explanatory, but, but I know that 2021, it was 16.1%, 16.1% used, and then 19 and 20, it was 120.6%. What exactly is community ser-- what, what is under that umbrella?
I think we have budgeted there, some of the daycare facilities budgeted there. I know last year, we were over on daycare expenses.
Right, by 120% over.
So I think that's 71, that's 7100 purpose code is for our daycare facilities.
Okay, okay, thank you. I was just wondering.
Next, we have our capital outlay expenses for Statement of Revenue and Expenditures and Encumbrances for the month of April. We're pretty much on target for that as well. I mean, we do have a little bit less revenue this year in our, in our capital funds. This is not including bond funds, this is our local capital funds. The next is the Statement of Net Position for Child Nutrition Program. We had budgeted a $5 million deficit for child nutrition this year due to, due to school closure, but we're going to come in better than that this year. But this is, on the next page, you'll see the Statement of Expenses and Revenues. Right now, we're at a 1.253 million operating loss. We anticipated $5 million, so we're going to come in way better than we anticipated. But we were going to use child nutrition's fund balance to cover that loss. So we were, we were in good shape for that. But they will have more of their fund balance left now than they, than we thought, because their losses are coming in a lot less, since we've opened up school.
Ms. Gillis, when does the fiscal year end?
June 30th.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll be closing out for the next couple of weeks. I'll be frankly trying to get everything closed out. The next page is the Daycare Fund for the month of April. And we're pretty much in line with that as well. Like I said, last year, we were overspending on the daycare fund, because we were, we were paying our staff, but we didn't have the revenue coming in for the kids because of school closure. And that is it for the financial statements. Are there any other questions?
Do we move on to the Budget Amendments?
All right. Next, we'll have the Budget Amendment. All right. Here's Budget Amendment Number 5 and Transfer Number 5. The first one is a Federal Grant Fund Amendment for the Language Acquisition ESL Grant. We got an additional $9,269, and we are appropriating that as necessary. Next section is Other Restricted Funds. We have an amendment for the new funds for the Winston-Salem Foundation for Project Impact Pathway to One of $292,000. The next amendment is the Carryover Funds from the Winston-Salem Foundation for the Peer Project Teacher Leadership Pathways Program of $60,659. And then, we also have a $20,000 Budget Amendment for the Go Global Nokalana for the Confucius Grant Program at the Career Center in Conoco for $20,000. Next, we have our Budget Transfers. Local Current Expense Fund Transfer Funds Used for, for the school allotments. They're transferring money between their budgets for supplies, shredding, cell phones, posters, office supplies, athletic insurance, and other miscellaneous expenses. Next, we have State Public School Fund. We transfer some funds in the early college funding to correct the King error. This includes transfer from advertising to instruction, to instruction due to the year-end spending constraints. Next, we have a transfer, another restricted, which is a budget transfer for the Project Impact Pathway to K to meet the needs of the program. We're transferring funds from purchase services in $6,500, I mean, I'm sorry, for employee benefits, $5,300 to purchase services, to make sure we budget where we spent the funds. And that is all for the Budget Amendments, not a lot. We'll have a lot more coming up in the, that last meeting in June, because we'll be closing the books. So I'll be doing a lot of Budget Amendments and Transfers once we finalize all of our expenses for the year. So that was, that's why we had that special call board meeting on top of the SFR funds. We're going to present that as well. And the next sections are just the summary pages. Are there any questions on the Budget Amendments? All right.
Move on to the Resolution for Interim Appropriations.
So the next one is... So as you recall, last year, as opposed to us doing a interim budget and having to adopt that, we, we started doing the interim appropriations for us to continue to pay salaries and to spend ordinary expenses until we get a budget. Hopefully, we'll get one this year. You know, like an adopted budget from the state. But we'll have to wait and see. So this resolution simply states that it's resolved that the Chief Financial Officer of Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools be, be and hereby is authorized to continue paying salaries and usual ordinary expenses of the school district. This authorization is to be effective from July 1, 2021, until adoption of a new budget resolution pursuant to Nokalana General Statute 115-C-434. Any such interim appropriations which are expended shall be charged to the proper appropriations at the 2021-22 budget adoption, budget upon adoption. So that is simply what that is. Any questions? All righty.
Do you have any disdain, do you have any questions? We're good?
I'm good.
Okay. The next presentation, I'm up here for a while today, is the Assistant Principal Recommendation, Assistant Principal Salary Recommendations. Oops, I may need to do that. So the current Assistant Principal Pay Plan is based on the state salary schedule, which is 19% above the bachelor salary schedule for teachers. But the monthly supplement for the, which is the local pay for APs, is based on the eligible teacher supplement for elementary schools, I mean, for elementary schools, middle schools, and traditional high schools. We also have an add-on factor for each, currently, an add-on factor for each year Assistant Principal or Principal Experience of $20 per month, the max of $200. And also, we pay the NIBIT certification of $200 per month for any AP holding an active NIBIT certification. So the state will still provide Assistant Principals with base pay stipend for earned advanced or doctorate degrees. The staff is recommending the following for Assistant Principal Salaries. We want to transition Assistant Principals away from teacher salary schedule to give them their own salary schedule. We want to implement a new AP salary schedule, which will include their state-based pay, which is based on the 19% above the bachelor teacher pay, and also include their local pay in, in their own schedule. In addition to that, we want to transition Assistant Principals to 11 months, if currently working less than 12 months. So we do have, every school gets one 12-month AP, I mean, I'm sorry, every middle and high school gets one 12-month AP. But all other schools get APs based on 10 months and some days. And so we have some that get 10 months and four days for elementary school, I think it is. It's 10 months and, I think, nine days for middle school, and like, a 10 months and 19 days for high schools. But to make it easier and to make sure that Principals have coverage for, you know, AP coverage, you know, pretty much all summer, except for that one month of July, we want to put APs, make all APs 11 months, so that everybody will be on the same, you know, no matter what level you are, you make, you work the same amount of months, unless you're the 12-month AP. Because right now, if you transition from elementary to middle, you have a different work schedule. The cost associated with this is $102,000. We would also want to eliminate the NIBIT supplement for new hires and promotions for Assistant Principals, because the state really doesn't pay that. And NIBITS really is a teacher certification, but Principals who do have it, I mean, APs that do have it, typically, we only have about three or four in the district right now that currently have it. The rest of them let it lapse. But we will continue to pay for anyone who's currently getting it, as long as it's current. So, so we grandfather anybody who currently, currently gets it, will still continue to get it.
Question. So the 102, that's, because I guess in my head, I was thinking that, like, their pay would just be, if you're going from like, if you were 10 months, you're going to 11 months, that pay would just be spread out. So what's that, what is that 102 for?
That's to, just to give them pay for those additional days. Like, if, yeah, if I'm a, if I'm a high school AP, I'm going to get paid for two more days. Because I think it's like 21 or 21.5 days in a month. It's like some wacky number that DPI uses for pay, but it's like 21 and a half days. So they would get paid for the 21 and a half days instead of the 19 days now.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So here's what the proposed Assistant Principal Pay Plan would look like now. It's pretty much, it's pretty similar to where it currently is, but it will be based on the, the monthly supplement will be based on the eligible AP supplement schedule for elementaries, for elementaries, and 20%, you know, the AP supplement plus 20% for middle schools and non-traditional high schools, and then the AP supplement plus 75% for traditional high schools. Like I said, they still receive the add-on factor for years of experience, and the state will still pay the advanced and doctorate degrees, and will grandfather in any AP who's currently receiving the NIBITS pay for the duration of the active NIBITS license. So this is what the schedule will look like. So this is the schedule specifically for an elementary AP. So middle school AP would get the, oops, the 20% of the local supplement, will be an additional 20% of the local supplement for them, and then 75% for the high school APs. But this is what the AP schedule would look like. And this also is, when we were asking to approve it tonight, but if the state comes through in July or August with changes to the, to the state pay, then we will have to come back and, we will do that with a bunch of other stuff as well, because it won't just be APs. But if the state adjusts the state, adjusts the AP salary state rate, then we will come back and adjust that as well. But right now, it's based on the current rate. But like I said, it's pending legislation. It could, it could change, and those, these amounts could go up for the state pay.
Gotcha.
And that is it for the AP presentation. Any questions?
I have a question about it. And I'm, I've got, I'm thinking like a mom here. So if I'm an AP, and I've been working 10 months and two days, and now I'm moving up to 11 months, what's the notice on this, so that I can think about childcare, or, you know, how that's going to affect?
Well, we notified Principals early, you know, early on that we wanted to do this. And so hope, I think a lot of them already are aware of it. It won't, it won't start until August. Like, this is, this is affected, I mean--
So it'll affect next summer, more than this summer.
Yeah, it'll affect next summer, more than this summer.
Okay. I just want to make sure people had time to plan.
And if they, and if they want to, they can, if they want to, they can still, you know, take the days off, if they don't want to start when, on August 1st, when, you know, APs start work. If they want to, they can just take vacation, or, you know, have other options. They don't have to start that day. They just work out with their principal, if they've already made plans.
Okay.
We're flexible with that. But we wanted to make sure we, we want to get everybody on the same, you know, on a similar terms of employment, because it's like, you've got 10 months and four days, 10 months and 14 days, 10 months and 19 days. It's kind of confusing when you're moving from one level, when you're moving from one high school, you know, high school to a middle school, or from elementary school to a high school, and you're AP, you get paid, you know, you get paid differently as it is, but then you also get paid on, you know, less days, if you move, if you move around, or more days.
But also, I think, and, and Madam Superintendent maybe would be, could, could speak to this. I think that the other issue is that some of the APs may, are off, but they're actually working, like during that time as well.
Right. And typically, they were working--
Sort of like the A.D.s.
Right.
Yeah. And typically, we, we know, if they do work, they're, you know, they're supposed to get paid extended employment. But in, and, you know, schools will have the opportunity to do that. If they want to pay them, you know, for that one month that they don't get paid, schools will have the opportunity, if they, if they have the funding available to say, I want to just use my AP all summer for our program or whatever. And then this also helps out with summer school, because, you know, the AP can serve as the summer school site coordinator. So it, it kind of makes a lot of sense for us to make them 11 months.
Yep. Could you also address with the board what happens with the quarter penny sales tax and the teacher supplement?
Right. So the quarter penny sales tax is strictly for the teacher supplements. I mean, it was made very clear to us, you know, when we went through this endeavor to get this approved, that it's going to be, that is for teacher supplements only. And so because this, the Principals, I mean, the AP salary schedule was tied to teacher supplements before, it kind of made it hard for us to give them the same raise as teachers, because we don't have the funding for it. So we, we still want to give them raises. However, we can't give them the same exact raise as we give teachers, because the funding is not there. All right. And I think that is it for me.
Okay. Then we're going to have a presentation on the Walkertown Booster. Daryl not here?
Okay.
We're just moving too fast for him.
I know, he moved too fast. Sorry. Here he comes.
Hi, Daryl, you've been paged.
I'll just talk from here, Daryl.
Yeah.
Kevin, you running the show, right? So this is something that came to through Buildings and Grounds, actually, in 2012, when we built Walkertown High School. The Booster Club at that time, let me back up. Our standards at the time we built high schools were basically, we built a stadium field, stadium, a stadium field with irrigation and lights. We built a baseball and softball field without irrigation and lights. So that was kind of our standard at the time. To kind of set the tone a little bit. The Booster Club came back along the, and wanted to increase and improve some of their athletic facilities after the bomb. They asked the district for a loan of $100,000, and you see the terms kind of in front, up front of you there. Paid back over two years, and there's annual payment they made every year in January. This next January will be their last payment on the principal of that loan. And the only thing really left is the interest payment. And so the question that the boosters have asked is, could we relieve them of the interest payment? The loan will, principal will be paid in full, and that, would we relieve them of the interest payment of the $21,000, which is basically a profit margin for the district, really, since all the principal would be paid for. And so that is the request from them. They will make that last payment of 14,664 in January of 2022, and then that would be paid in full at that point.
How many times have we done programs like this, where we have a Booster Club and/or some kind of a community involvement to make a loan for a facility like this and then pay it back? What, how was the history of that? Have we done it before?
We've done, we did one for Mount Tabor, actually, twice since I've been here, and Reagan as well, early on when they opened up. And those are the only four that I can recall. Well, let me take it back. Atkins did one as well. Apology. That's correct. Reynolds Alton did.
Okay. So there's a history of doing it. And did we forgive the loans on those, the interest rate?
I do not recall. They were pretty far back, probably 10 or 12 years ago. In fact, well, I remember Mount Tabor paid theirs off early. They had a 10-year loan and paid it off in like five or six years. So my guess is they paid it completely off.
So I don't know, I just have a real problem with this. I mean, I, I get that, everything just went out. I get that this was standard, that you only supplied so many things in 2011, but I, I just have a problem, because it was basic infrastructure of an athletic facility, and I was looking at the things that they wanted. And I was also looking at the contract and the agreement, and it was saying that, you know, if they didn't pay it back, this was on page 46, that then the interest would bump up to 18% almost, as though they were being punished for not being able to raise enough money. And I just, I don't know, I would just like to propose, not only do we pay back, not only do we forgive the remaining interest, but also pay back, I'd love to pay back $85,000 of it, you know, everything that they've paid. I just, I just have a real problem with this. And I, I just think that, you know, maybe they didn't have enough money, maybe we didn't have money in 2011 or 2012. I mean, was that kind of what it was?
Yeah, we were at the end of the 2006 bond, so we were kind of, and we had just started our capital plan for our facilities fees for the county. So we were in that window where we didn't even have any cash at all, kind of.
But we have it, so we have more of it now. I mean, I just, I don't know, I just think about--
That's kind of why I asked, what was the history, and what was the precedent, and how long has this been going on? Because this has been happening for other schools. We want to be consistent with pretty much, I don't have a problem with interest rates being removed, because that's extra, it's profit. But if this arrangement's been done many times with other schools, especially wealthier schools, it's hard to say, because that'll set a precedent where these wealthier schools can come back in and say, well, you did it for them, why not for us?
Well, and could, could we hear from, like, I think what would help me is to hear from our, I think, our board members who may have been here at--
Well, I was going to ask that, if Marilyn and Elizabeth could shed some light on that.
Daryl, I also wanted to ask about how much money do Booster Clubs bring in on a typical year? Because obviously, their high school Booster Club was not able to successfully raise money last year.
Correct. Most of, most of the money they raise is either through sale of cloth, material, hats, things of that nature, concessions. On a good year, concession-wise, you'll probably make $4,000 or $5,000 in concessions on a good year. But they do a lot of other type fundraising all throughout the year, outside of the school a lot of times. And so they, they did, at least Walkertown, I know, did a lot of community fundraising outside of the school to meet the need to be able to pay that $14,000 every, every year. So they, not, it's not just on the backs of the gate, not, it doesn't come out of the gate at all.
Right. No, I mean, I'm just saying that--
Concessions, or cloth, or some other fundraising.
Yeah, I mean, Booster Clubs, where they raise their money, is connected to people coming to athletic events. And that's what the loan was for, is that right?
Well, at the time, they, they had just started their Booster Club. So they had not had a chance to kind of get their feet wet yet on the ground, because this was the first year of the school opening, so.
So, I mean, I, I think that from my perspective, that is a very specific and particular hardship that they have had this year compared to the other loans. I personally find it very troublesome to go back retrospectively and say, we should pay back things that people paid for, because we could go back into every building and every project and say, well, somebody got, there were new windows put into Reynolds, and there were not new windows put into all of our schools. And I think we would create a disaster doing that. And it seems, so I think what's being--
The difference, so it's private dollars, that, you know, if you're talking about what's been putting in, put in, these are private dollars, not public dollars.
No, but we, we have had lots of relationships with schools over many years, where they have borrowed money to make capital improvements, and Booster Clubs have indeed paid back. And that that has been the norm and the standard in the district, that that would happen. To me, the fact that Walkertown has just lived through the last year that the rest of us have, makes it very reasonable to talk about forgiving the interest payment while they're willing to pay it off. I really think that it's dangerous to make a precedent of, we're going to go backwards and somehow pay people back for things they did, because you are opening a can of worms that you will never close again. So I really, I, I always think that our job is-- So, I really, I always think that our job is to look forward and not, you know, if you make a new decision, you make policy based on the new decision. You don't go back and try to do things based on an old decision.
And if I remember correctly to, to your question, we, we did do quite a few of those loans, and I do think we forgave interest. Some did we, and to the answer of why we had the 18% in there, I think council said we needed to be very specific, because the people who are signing that, you know, I noticed one is Brad Bries, who, you know, those people are long gone at this point. Their children have graduated, and they are out. So I think that was a lot of the reasoning between some of the language. It wasn't that we were trying to be punitive, but it was literally that we were trying to make sure that, that, that went on down the road successfully, and that, you know, it wasn't something that, four years from now, when everybody's gone, they could just drop the ball and say, "Well, we didn't," you know.
Yeah.
And so, that was a lot of that. And I will say too, in the, that was during the really lean years, that this was happening. What we did do in the fat years, we had a really nice plan, where we, we gave grants, so to speak, and Darrell, you chime in at any point if I forget anything. But we gave grants to schools, and, and we, we took, it was based on their percentage of free and reduced lunch, and how much percentage and things that we gave, gave the grant for, and all that. So we did, in fat years, we did provide things for schools. I know, I remember some of them gave covered walkways into some schools, playgrounds, different things like that, that we, we as a school system, when we had money, we did fund some things like that.
They were matching grants.
Matching grants, right. Independent, yeah, independent on their.
Free and reduced lunch.
Free and reduced lunch, it was the percentage that, that they had to match, and what the school system paid. So, there has been some of that in the past. But 2012, we didn't have textbooks. So it's a little bit difficult in those years to say, "We're going to pay for this." But, you know, you don't get a math gift.
Well, thank you for putting all of that in perspective and telling me about the, the other good stuff. And Elizabeth, what you say makes sense.
Crowley, do you have?
Yeah, I, I agree with not going retro, I think that's really difficult to do. But I do hope going forward, we update what our standards are as far as what each school has, because looking at something like, and looking at their list of what their $100 million went for, you know, team chairs.
$100,000.
I'm sorry, $100,000, $100,000. Team chairs, scorer's table, irrigation systems, I mean dugouts, that, that's kind of a necessity. Like, you can't have fields, and even the, you know, mowers and field equipment, unless the school system's putting in artificial turf, it has to be mowed. I, I don't, I just think that with, with school choice, you're, you really need a level playing field among all the schools when it comes to these types of things, or else the schools that have the means are going to keep doing more, and that's, it's, you need that, you need that baseline to give everybody a fair shot at competition. Not just, and I don't mean on the scoreboard, I mean for students. So, which, which affects the scoreboard clearly. But, and that affects the gate, I mean, it's, it all is a big domino thing. But that's where, I mean, some of these things, like, do they need, did they need to spend $4,000 on team chairs? Could they have just gotten folding chairs from Costco, you know, that, that? But there needs to be an amount, I think, on each of these things to say, "This is how much we'll give you. If you want to upgrade and get your school logo on them, then you, then your booster club needs to pitch in." But to me, the cost of dugouts, that's, I, I can't believe that would not have been part of the standard. And the same thing with the lighting.
Yeah, well, the dugouts were a part of the standard, they upgraded them somewhat, and did an extension to them.
Okay.
But like, so when we, as we go forward, when, as part of our Facility Advisory Committee, you're going to see us come back to you with a set of standards.
Great.
Part of that, not to get out of, out of bounds here, but we're not going to talk about just athletics. You've got the same issue with elementary playgrounds.
Yes.
You've got the same issue with middle school fields. You've got, so bleachers. So you're going to see us come back with a different standard. I think our, I think our, in the past, our focus has been with bond dollars, is to focus on the brick and mortar piece. And then, you know, and try to keep our costs down to brick and mortar. But as we expanded programs, be it athletics, be it high school, middle school, playgrounds, really, because you don't have as much booster PTA support, that money is not as, as prevalent as it used to be, right? So now, we have to make a decision as a district, do we include all these things within the standard of all of our construction, or do we still focus on brick and mortar? And, and that's a decision that we have to make together. And so you'll see that come back to you as part of our Facility Advisory Committee.
And I'll come into Buildings and Grounds.
Oh.
Yeah. Buildings and Grounds, correct? That'll come in through Buildings and Grounds next, when you come for that facilities. It won't come to finance.
Right.
No, it'll come through Buildings and Grounds.
You know, and I know.
But we'll present it to, probably to, to the full board. Because full board really needs to make a decision on what our standards are going to be within the district.
Yes. And, you know, I remember years and years and years ago, somebody gave a whole track at Mount Taber.
Mount Taber.
They did the whole, I mean, a donation, a private citizen. So, I mean, you know, you're going to have things that are going to happen like that, and I guess, I mean, you've got to consider all those things, because.
And there's schools now who want to have their boosters pay for artificial turf for their field. So, there's going to have to be a balance there, if you've got, you know, one school with one gym, and it's a tile floor, and another school with two gyms, and they're both hardwood floors, we've got a discrepancy here, and that's where, that's where it needs to be evened out some. I think with school dollars, not expecting booster clubs to raise that to meet that gap. That's where I don't think it's fair.
Just something I really need to say on behalf of the district, is that we have been through fatter times and leaner times. And I think that it is important to remember that when I first got on the board, within a couple of years, we hit a real downturn, and it was very difficult. And the board's focus was making sure not to lay off employees into a recession. And I will always believe that that was the right decision. I'm proud that this district found a way not to lay off people. And if you gave me a choice between enhancing dugouts and lighting, or keeping people employed during a recession, we made the right choice, in my estimation. I think it is always important to realize that you can have aspirational goals, but you are not always universally going to be able to meet them. And I think it is important to be thoughtful and intentional about what you wish. But when public education is funded as well as you're wishing for, I'll be a happy girl, and so will everyone else. But we have not had those days in the 14 years I've been here, and I think it's really important to remember that.
The really challenging ones about this one is 2012 was that, in that era, it was a really tough time. In fact, we as a district were scheduled to have a bond referendum in 2012, and we decided to pull back because of the economic downturn. And so, they just came in kind of on the tail end of that too. So that's kind of why this ass, big ass happened early on, I think.
But we can lay off people.
No, yeah, we made some really tough decisions not to lay off people.
But that really meant everything else when I was living there.
That was actually a year we had to cut $29 million, if you recall.
I could hardly begin to tell you what that was like. And there was nobody on board, and there was nobody on staff, who felt, I, and again, what this district did is phenomenal, and I would never go back and say that we should have done this.
I appreciate, no, and I appreciate that historical perspective. I think that that's good for us to remember that, and, and know that moving forward. So I agree that it's, it's tough to go back and, and, you know, because that, those were the standards there. That was the time, that was what, that was the environment we were living in, which is, so, yes. I, I, I'm probably glad I was not sitting in those seats back then. I know you made some really tough, tough decisions, and I appreciate the service that you guys have given through the years. I do remember that when we were discussing the 2018 bond, that we did look at some of those loans that had been made, because I think, somehow it came up, and so, I, I can't remember, I want to say it was Reagan, that some of the, some of the interest was forgiven on, and, and it was kind of that, kind of, you know, along the, along the same lines, they paid, you know, they paid the balance. And, and I would even say, you know, with, with losing a year of revenue from, from booster club sales, because you're not, you know, you're not present in there, that, you know, even splitting that $14,000 and change over, over, if they need an extra year to pay it, you know, I think that's reasonable to do that, to forgive the interest and even do that. Because, you know, it, it's really tough, and they are, you know, they're a smaller high school in our district. And, you know, but, but, you know, I was, I'm married, I was married to a booster club president for, you know, and I know how many, I mean, I worked selling T-shirts, and if they needed you in the concession stand, and trying to sell signage, and all the extra things that you have to do outside. And I think we've all probably done, you know, a lot of us have done that, and it's, and it's tough. And so, if, if that makes it a little easier for them, to where they don't have to change their four or five-year plan there at the high school, then, then, you know, if we could consider even splitting that up to help them, but maybe that would be a conversation with the, with the organization.
I can have that conversation.
And I definitely don't think we should be making a profit off loans from our booster club parents. I think, I mean, I understand you might need to cover what it's costing us by not having that money making money for us, but, you know, 4% isn't exorbitant, but it's still higher than, you know, a mortgage payment right now, so.
Part of the reason we got, started giving schools, part of this athletic capital funds every year is just for this reason, to try to prevent having to get loans annually, and not let some of it build up so that they can do projects and not have to come to the district and borrow money.
Yeah.
Mr. Rohanen, did you have a question?
Well, I was just, I was going to say that I agree with Board Member Jones, but I also wanted to say that it's, when I first sort of saw this, I was critical, because in my head, I was like, when, since when is the district in the, in the business of providing loans to people, or to groups or organizations? And I didn't, I questioned the sort of efficacy of that practice, because I, I just, in my head, I'm like, I don't. And it seems like to me, if a booster club is in a good position to pay it back, it, it kind of, in, in, in my view, perpetuates inequity to an extent, because there are schools whose booster clubs may not be as strong, who may not be in a position to be able to come to the district to say, you know, "Give us a loan, and we'll be able to pay it back." But given the history, I understand completely what the purpose of it was. And so, given that, and also given the previous year, I am in favor of forgiving the interest and sort of giving them the time to pay off the balance. But I think that moving forward, I think we need to get this practice and these standards kind of written down, so that they can be referenced.
Sure, absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
I, I feel like the smaller schools, that we really got to look at that differently, because they don't have the clientele at their games. They don't have the people coming through and paying the monies that some of our larger schools do. And how we do that and be absolutely fair is hard.
It is. And we, we actually, Ms. Parker and Ms. Montziger may remember, a few years ago, we actually did that for Carver, we ended up buying some football uniforms for them, and some band uniforms, because there was a, they didn't have a booster club, quite honestly, just to be totally honest with you. And they were really struggling. And so, the district made a decision to support that, and not, I think we bought band uniforms for a couple of different schools, not just Carver, but, so there have been times where we've had to, you know, but I, I think, I think you're right. I mean, once you get a standard, I mean, we need to come back and ask, we should come back and ask. But I do think we need to create some standards around where we're going from here, and what that looks like, and make sure that it's good practice and policies in place for, for finance, and, and whoever's got to support that and manage that, because. But I, I agree, it is challenging for some of our schools. And as I mentioned before, playgrounds, it's really challenging for elementary schools, and some of ours with, you know, in our, some of our neighborhoods.
And if, if we are about equality, we want to make sure that when we're talking about this money and the different things, that we look at how these monies can be paid back. And we also need to look at the support that these smaller schools get versus the support that the larger schools get.
I agree, but when we do make a financial, like, when you make your plan, we do have to leave open the door in case we do need to use loans as an option, or matching as an option, because sometimes you do have lean years, and you're doing whatever you can to get the money in the coffers to get it done.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I have no issue with the interest, I think that's, that's more than applicable. And I think Ms. Jones's idea of splitting your year was actually a very good idea.
Yeah, I like that.
I know too.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? I think we're all good. Thank you, so we can move on to action items? The first one is to consider full, full board approval of the budget amendment. So is this, this is going to be an entire full board?
Uh, move.
So it's the committee to push it to the full board?
Yes, for the second meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Move approval. Second.
All in favor? Okay, that passes. We consider a full approval of the recommend, the recommended resolution for the interim, so she continue to pay salaries?
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor? Consider the full board approval of the assistant principal compensation. Questions or discussions?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, and finally, consider the full board approval of the booster loan forgiveness.
Move to approve with Ms. Jones's amendment, that it is offered to the booster club to break that up into two years. Second.
All in favor? That passes too. Thank you very much, hand this over to Buildings and Grounds.
Okay, so, we'll just remind ourselves who is on the committee, myself, Lyda Calvert-Hayes, Deanna Kaplan, Marilyn Parker, and Alex Bohannon. First, Colin's going to run through a couple of things with us. First, to talk about the cell tower lease consideration, and then next, the North Forsyth renovation project.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Ms. McManus, and other committee and board members. Want to kind of quickly run through these items I've got tonight. But before I do that, I want to introduce, as y'all may know, we've been short-staffed for quite some time, about three or four months now. So, we were lucky enough to steal someone from the city of Winston-Salem. And Donna Beck joined us May 24th. So Donna joined us May 24th as a senior project manager. She'll be mainly responsible for the pre-design, the pre-construction, and some of the, the tail-end things, the, the technology cameras and things like that. So, glad to have Donna on board, she's, she has been graciously handed the Brunson Brownfields project, so, see ya.
Welcome.
So, hop into the cell tower lease. So a few, few weeks ago, we were approached, or I guess a couple of months ago, approached by a group called Vogue Towers about the possibility of installing a cell tower. We get about probably one or two of those every three or four months, and I typically just kind of blow them off. But this one, I kind of wanted to investigate a little bit further, because there is so much excess land at North Forsyth, that I thought it might be worth exploring. They kind of preliminary just talked about some, some lease arrangements, and it's not a big area. It's not, it's not the big fenced-in 100 by 100 with all the wires coming down. That's like me, kind of old school. Nowadays, they're just poles, and a lot of them are designed, you can't, they'll put them in with light stadium, like field lights at stadiums, and they look a lot like lights. But this one, it's what they call a monopole, and it's basically a pole sticking up. So I just, I didn't want to do that without you, you guys being informed of what I was doing, so that you wouldn't have people in the community coming out saying, "Hey, they're going to put a cell tower at North Forsyth." We're not going to put, we're not saying we're going to put a cell tower at North Forsyth, but I would like to explore a little bit further.
Colin, on something like that, if that were to go there, do the revenues generated from that go into the district? Do they go to the school?
I, I think that will be a board decision.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's a board decision. Ms. Jenkins, you can correct me. Is that the, the revenue from something like a cell tower? Is that, that's, I assume would be a board decision, we don't have anything about policy right now on that.
That's correct, nothing in the policy about cell tower revenues. I assume if it just comes to the district and like for a general fund, but if you make a decision if you like that, to be earmarked for a different purpose.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on that?
What, do we know where the funds, we've done a couple of those. I know there's one at Clemens Middle, in, in. What, what, do we know where the funds? We've done a couple of those. I know there's one at Clemens, um, middle and, um, in Marvin Ward. What, where did the revenues go then? Do we know? Or can we find out?
I do not know off the top of my head, but we can certainly find out and update the board about.
So I'm sorry, you said Clemens Elementary or Middle?
Middle.
And Ward?
Mm-hmm. There's one out. It's been done years and years and years ago, as best as I remember. And it, it is kind of the old timey kind. And it's the same deal, Colan, because it's right where you come into, you know, it's in that field up above and all that, so it's not.
On the left or on the right as you're coming in?
On the, on the right.
Okay, so it's come before you get down to Ward?
Yeah, it's way, way away from the schools so that you don't, you know, you don't see it. But I think we've done a couple of those in the past. Do you remember? I just was, I don't know where the revenue went, but I think that was it. I don't know, it was.
Sorry, that was my ringtone.
What was that?
So, uh, so the monopole picture that you had from the Dambel, Virginia one, uh, was the monopole with the stadium lights? And that's, I mean, is that something that we could entertain? I mean, I think that's kind of cool.
Yeah, does that, is that something I can pull up, Kevin? I think it's the Vogue Towers.
I have seen a couple of towers that are piggybacked on that not only do they cover cell towers, but they also are used by the, um, cable companies and other utilities. So if, if that, if we do that, it's as able to option into other utilities so that we can get even more money on that one single spot.
That's what these people do and we'll probably make that part of our negotiation. But she basically described this, this pole as a retail center, as a, as a vertical retail center. So you got a horizontal center that somebody builds and leases a bunch of space, they do the same thing vertical. On the different cell companies, they also, as part of their, as part of their program, offer on the tower, free of use, I don't know if it had it, I think it had it in here, EMS and emergency services, they provide that free to the county, uh, if they want to locate on that on this, on this tower. I know there's typically been some concern about, about, does it harm people? And, and she said, of course, I'm always stay on the right end. But she said, honestly, you get more exposure sitting in your living room watching TV than you do, than you do from a tower being on a property.
Well, I mean, even the high tension power line issue at two hundred and fifty feet away, it reduces greatly. So it doesn't take a long distance to dissipate that kind of radio signal.
Okay, additional questions on, on this item? If not, well, Colan, if you can move on to the North Forsyth renovation project?
Yep. If I can get all fancy and pull up my, my information here. So as you know, I think, I think it was at the last meeting, you approved the drawings for the North Forsyth renovation project or in the, in the May board meeting. We, we have those, that project has been out for bid and the G N, the, the general contractor or the construction manager has received those numbers and we're going, we saw some preliminary numbers on, on Friday. And we're working on some value engineering and some alternatives that we want to look at on that project. So we're working through that GMP and should be able to bring that back to you at the twenty-third, at the next, at the, at the, at the board session, at the board meeting, twenty-second. So just want to give you that heads up that we're going to try to bring that to you on that, on that next meeting if there are any questions.
So, Colan, you're trying to val, you're going to value engineer it down? Cause the bid came into, is that what it is?
It didn't take you long to figure this game out, did it?
Cause I mean, if that's the case, then I, the question would be, what are we taking out? Well, I mean, if you're trying to value engineer it down, what pieces are you taking out?
It's, it's just, uh, things that, it's not anything that's going to compromise the integrity of the building or anything that's going to compromise the, um, maintenance of the building or the upkeep of the building. But they're just items that maybe the, the carpet might be a little too fancy or the tile might be a little bit too fancy. Or maybe we can use this type of flooring finish, things like that. We're trying to look at items like that that may have, that may have been wish list items on the drawings that we may can do without.
Okay. And is it, it's just, is it crazy out of the budget?
Um, not in my opinion, Mr. Bohannon. It's, um, I, I think it's, uh, in, in light of the times where we are with, with, um, um, construction, I'm, I'm not, I'm not offended by the number. Um, I, I think it's a, I think it's a reachable number and it's, uh, we're also doing some stuff. We had some discussions on previous projects, how we're doing all this stuff in one location and not touching anything else throughout the building. We're doing some other things like improving the HVAC system. I don't know if you've been to North Forsyth lately, but you, when you pull in off of Haynes Mill Road, you cannot figure out where to go. So I'm reconfiguring some entrances and redoing stuff in there, things that weren't included in the bond, just to make it a little bit better environment. Also trying to light some, do new ceilings and lights else throughout the rest of the building, just to touch all the different wings. Cause if the teachers in the other wings, they get on these calls and they're like, so you're not doing anything on our wing? And I'm like, well, the bond scope didn't include that. And they're like, okay, well, we're going to drop off. And I'm like, no, no, just, you know, we're trying to, we're going to try to get everybody a little something, so.
And, and Colan, I think to Board Member Bohannon's point, um, maybe when we bring that back, you can show us those things that weren't in the original scope that we've been able to add.
Absolutely.
And then maybe some of those things we had to, you know, instead of using the tile, we did some type of concrete or.
The stained concrete, things, yeah. We'll give you an itemized list of what those items are and the things that we, the things that we kind of include in the plans that we're taking out now. And then also some things that weren't necessarily in the scope that may have been included.
Great, thank you.
There should be some update. I mean, if you update the lights, there's savings in that as well as HVAC, correct? If we do, some of the upgrades that you'll do will save us money in the long.
That's right. In the long run, it will. It's less expensive to do it now than to try to get a contractor back in there later. Yep.
Right. I was out there not too long ago and I noticed also the painting. Uh, you know, it's only natural, I looked at that. But, um, you know, there's a lot of savings in money when you keep things painted and you don't have the rotten wood and, and things like that. And I, when I was at North, I really, really noticed, uh, a lot of those areas, even though we'll have to spend a little money, I think we'll save a lot of money in the, in the long run. Not replacing boards and rot and, and things like that, Colan. I don't know if y'all are including anything like that. But, um, my eyes saw it as soon as I rode in there.
Yeah, there, so we're including everything in the, in the original building that was built in nineteen sixty-three. But the, the sixty-five edition and the sixty-seven edition were taken out. But we're trying to touch a few of those areas just to do a few things, so. Any other questions?
Okay, so I think now we're going to have a Brunson update.
Yep, if you recall at the May, we're, no, I'm sorry, at the April board meeting, y'all gave us authorization to proceed on with the Brownfields applications, the thirty thousand dollar, uh, what they call redevelopment now application. We submitted that application. I don't think it's got in your information. That we got the letter of receipt from, from N C D E Q. And I want to say it was the first or second week in May, but that's in their queue. Uh, it usually takes them about two mi, two weeks of reviewing to kind of get, kind of figure out where, where it landed in the queue. So we're expecting to hear something back from them pretty soon, uh, in the next week or so. Uh, and as I mentioned, Donna's kind of helping out with some of that. She's, uh, kind of getting the, getting her feet wet and kind of understanding the Brownfields program and what that whole piece looks like and, and devoting most, a lot of her time to that. So we've done that. We've also extended the option, uh, with the seller. So we now have until the end of the year to close specifically. And, um, we've got that information to it. So we'd also mention, uh, community meetings. And as you prob, as a lot of you know, over, I think probably over, um, two different boards, we've had several community meetings, uh, preliminary, we've had them to talk about Brownfields, we've had. This has been a long one. Um, so we, we just want to make sure what, what, so we, we talked about doing an in-person and talked about doing a virtual. I don't know if we want to stay on the virtual path. I think some people may still want to, some people may don't. We're good either way. But just kind of looking to see specifically from, from board members, what kind of information do you want us to focus on during these community meetings? We've had meetings to talk about design. We've had meetings to talk about Brownfields program. We've had meetings to talk about location. And so, so with, with this, with this next, with this next meeting or two, I want to make sure we hit the topics that you want us to hit.
So what's our timeline? So, you know, school, school's out. And, um, you know, it's been a tough school year, so I think people really want to have a little downtime. And I just wonder if we try to do something in a June and July and not put it kind, you know, I, I'm thinking if you wanted probably your biggest feedback from, from, you know, parents there at Brunson and that sort of thing, that you might incorporate that somehow into the open house or the start of the school year. And I'm not saying not to do meetings in June or July, but really, you know, you're, you're probably, just people are out. So just the availability, it's not like we're in the normal, you know, fall weather. People are taking, I mean, this is the first time we've been able to be in the building without our mask on if we choose not to and those kinds of things. So people are taking advantage of that and I think, you know, and getting out. So I would just say the timing of it so that you don't have a meeting and you put all that into it and you really don't get the feedback that you want. So unless you have to do it in the month of June and July, I would say wait. So to where, you know, it's, it's a really hearty dis- discussion. And then, you know, I, I think to, to, sometimes we could kind of throw questions out at you. But I, I would also say maybe if there were a, a sample list of things that you were going to ask, that you could provide to us and let us give you feedback that way, um, you know, might be beneficial. And then I'm not, I'm not sure what, I, I think to me, part of the biggest thing is the education piece, is so what is a Brownfield? And, and have people there who can answer those, those questions, even if it were outside of our staff, but people from the state. And, you know.
I, I think the open house is an absolutely great idea. If we can work that out with Mr. Fallen, uh, because we, I mean, I don't want to take away from his open house. But if we can do that in a way that we can, that we can, um, um, work with him and I'm, when you hear me stuttering, it's because I'm brainstorming. But I think that, I think that's the great way to get people in the building. Um, we don't need to do it in June, July.
Basically.
Yeah, just basically put a table.
It's another table.
Yep.
Everybody's going from table to table, you're just another table.
Right.
I, I would just like to point out that the initial parents at parent meetings, their children have since then graduated from high school. And I think it's, seriously, they have. They're, they're maybe college at this point. So I think it's really important to understand that when we're talking about things, current parents are pro, except for the kindergarten and first graders, their kids are not going to this new school, maybe second graders for a year. And we've just had so many. So I think doing a table, a discussion around very specifically about Brownfield and limited, because there have been so many meetings over so many years and asking them again, um, might not be, keep it a very limited scope, have it in an open house. You want to ask questions, we got some answers for you. And not open up all over again.
Right, but the education piece, that's what I'm hearing.
Exactly, and be available.
What is the Brownfield? Yes.
Be available and have somebody there to answer the questions and be very open and honest and direct about it. But not to start having more what feels like parent meetings. Because again, those might be the children of the kids when we first started having parent meetings.
We, we have talked about this quite a bit. Other feedback that you would like to give to, to Colan now?
Just make sure when, if you, you just have the table that, that we leave enough time, we don't butt up to another open house, you know, another conflicting open house for parents or whatever, so that we.
You talking about like a middle school or a high school that they may have to go to?
Yeah, or another, if they have, cause the thing about Brunson is that you've got some parents there that are there for a special program. And then they may have to go to another elementary school to do another child, you know, so if they're all, they happen to be all on the same night. So just take that into consideration.
Yep, that's a great, that's a great point.
I, I think, Colan, it's also really important to have people that have had experience with this Brownfield. And, and if, I don't know if we could have anybody to come that's had experience pertaining to a school. But, uh, you know, I think something like that would be very, very interesting to the parents to hear the information on that, rather than just have somebody come and talk about a Brownfield that was, that was done on a manufacturing site or something like that.
It's a good idea too. We'll do, okay. I will coordinate with Mr. Fallen and see if I can find out a way to get my table not located between the bus table and the child nutrition table. No offense, Lauren.
So would this also include Southwest parents if we're talking about the H A G program there? No, yes? I think I'm seeing no.
What we found out from our survey, uh, Ms. Crowley, was we surveyed the Southwest parents as well. And their response on the survey was, do you want to go? No. Why? We like where we are. I mean, in short, I mean, in short, that's what we found out was they didn't want, they, they did not like the site, not because of where it was going to be, but because of where they were. So we can certainly do that, but that's kind of what the feedback we got was.
Time changes everything because there was a time where they did not want to be at, they did not want to be at their location.
I just didn't know if our goal was to bring that program all under one roof or what's the, you know, I understand where they want to stay. But, you know, the, the whole idea is supposed to pull into our schools that aren't as populated and aren't as diverse. So that's what I'm wondering.
When we have our, our planning meeting, I think it's in June, we're going to be talking about all magnets, all programming. We'll have more of a discussion then. Um, but at this point, there's not a plan to move the parents that are there, the families that are there based on that feedback that we got. That was pretty clear. But we'll talk more about the programming and, and where things are in our June, uh, board meeting.
Great. Okay. All right, thank you, Colan. So, um, next, Darrell Walker and Lauren Richards will give us an operations update, kind of a recap for the year.
Good evening again. Um, I just want to take just a second to introduce this. This is something we've kind of done on an annual basis toward the end of the school year to just kind of give you some information on the operational side of the school district. And appreciate, uh, your time, um, uh, to, to run through this tonight. Lauren's going to do the presentation. Uh, I will tell you, when we planned the agenda, this was the only item we were going to have because I knew we had a lot to talk about. But, you know, business rolls on and, and so I apologize for the length of our agenda. But, uh, all, all are really important items and need to be discussed. And, um, this is, um, would just take the opportunity to give some folks some kudos in operations on the maintenance and transportation, child nutrition, um, and our, and our warehouse and distribution. It's been a real challenging year for a lot of them in a lot of different ways and different ways. And so I really appreciate their efforts and I want to publicly take this opportunity to thank Lauren, who stepped into this role in the midst of COVID. Uh, actually, if you remember, Wayne retired, um, into February and two weeks later, we're shutting down and doing things. So Lauren, thank you for taking that role on, um, and, and doing it with class. And so I really appreciate her as well. So with that being said, I'm going to introduce and the, the star of the show, take it over. So thank you.
Darrell's just too sweet this evening. I don't know what's going on. I'm just kidding. He's always sweet. Good evening, board members, um, committee chair, Ms. McManus. I definitely don't have three slides tonight, um, as Darrell said, so please forgive me. Um, I'm not going to talk about every single item on here and I, I know that there's a lot of stuff. So I'm going to dive right in and start with maintenance. And so I wanted to give you an update on our work orders, um, for this school year. And so our work order count in total was definitely lower than it has been in previous years. You can see that curve there on that graph. But still quite a large number, um, for a year where we didn't have our buildings at full capacity. You can see that total number received was just under thirty-two thousand. Um, and right now we have outstanding just about three thousand. If you look at that bell curve, you can see that that's not really abnormal, um, as we get into the end of the year. One of the things that we were able to do during, um, this COVID time period was to tackle some, um, work orders that had been diverted because we couldn't get them done while students were in the buildings, while students were in the classroom. So we were able to take care of a few of those. And then some of those work orders that came in, you all probably remember our bipolar ionization, there were some large projects, um, that took up quite a bit of time and manpower to get those done. Um, so I, I'm pretty happy with where we turned out for the year. Um, and we will keep tackling those throughout the summer and working to get those things completed for our opening in August. I did want to take a moment and talk about positions. You'll kind of hear this as a common theme, um, throughout the presentation this evening. Um, and I do want to give some kudos to our human resources department, um, for each of these different areas as we go through. So currently, our maintenance division has a hundred and seventy-one staff members and we currently have eighteen vacancies. That number does not include five positions that we have diverted, um, over to contracting for painting. Painting has been one of the most challenging positions for us to place. Um, and painting is challenging for us when students are in the buildings. And so it's sometimes painting during the day, sometimes painting in the evening. So, um, we did test that this past year and contract some of that work. Some of that was successful and we were able to use our internal staff members to do some troubleshooting, some spot fill-in and different things and some touch-ups. And so we're going to continue to do that to support those buildings, just as Ms. Calvert-Hayes mentioned earlier, um, to keep those things in good repair. And so we have fourteen staff members that are currently eligible for retirement over the next two years. So we are monitoring that closely, um, hoping that they will stay with us and provide us their expertise. But certainly on the lookout for some new individuals to join our team. Um, and also to just continue to monitor how we do our work, um, and how we progress that forward, knowing that that is on the cusp. And then just a couple of key ratios that I wanted to point out for you. the cusp. And then just a couple of key ratios that I wanted to point out for you this evening. Out of that 171 staff members, that includes our facilities staff, that includes our warehousing staff, as well as capital projects. But amongst that number, there are 80 trades mechanics, excuse me, that work out and do these work orders every single day through the various trades. And over the number of years, we have added a significant amount of square footage. We're currently around nine million square feet. And so you can see there that that equates to about 110,000 square feet per technician. So you think about an average home and how much work that takes, and then multiply that quite a bit. And then same thing for our garage. We have a fleet of about 355 vehicles, and a little over, or excuse me, 175 pieces of equipment. That could be mowers for grounds, some specialty equipment, all of our snow plows, things of that nature. And so those five individuals each manage about 100 pieces of equipment, doing preventative maintenance, oil change, sharpening blades, various different tasks. So they certainly have a tall task. They do a fantastic job. I hardly ever hear them complain about getting the work done. They're always striving to figure out how they can fit one more project in, and I'm very appreciative of that. So there are some new challenges on the horizon for us. I did speak about positions, that is certainly one of our challenges. But COVID has had an additional challenge for us. One of those facing us currently is long lead times on supplies. In a lot of these trades, our lead time has been 24 to 48 hours. We go to a supply house and can pick that item up and get right back out to a school and complete that work order. We're now seeing lead times two weeks out to eight weeks, even longer for some specialty items. And so that is certainly causing us to have some, some challenges in supporting our schools. But we are working to try to explore other suppliers that we haven't worked with before, to try to find the things that we need, and try to move that along. We are also experiencing some increased costs across certain markets, and again, continuing to try to monitor that as best we possibly can to be conscious of cost. So along with those positions, some of the trades are experiencing issues with finding qualified applicants. We are starting to have conversations around enhancing our apprenticeship program, working on developing some partnerships within the community to try to gain some interest, and really working to advertise some of the, the benefits of working for our school district. We talk a lot about teachers and instructional staff. I think a lot of people out there just don't know quite how much work goes on behind the scenes, and how many positions there are truly available for trades like HVAC, electrical grounds, even technology and some other departments. There's also additional responsibilities that have come online. Speaking of technology, technology is a great thing, but with technology comes managing that technology. Additional systems require us to do preventative maintenance, and so that is automatically adding work orders. So you think about 90 buildings throughout the district. You know, if you add bipolar ionization to a building, you now have PMs for 90 buildings to check on the bipolar ionization. And we're also really trying to work to make sure that our HVAC systems are always above par, and providing the best air quality possible. So that is certainly an added task as well. I'm not going to dive into any of these hyperlinks here for you, but they are available to the public and all the board members. If you'd like to take a look at some of the highlights of some of the larger projects that each of the trades have been able to tackle over the years, you'll see some lighting projects, some mowing projects. In grounds, we did some river rock replacements, some different things. So please take a look at those, so that you can see some of that work that goes on, that people don't necessarily see in the scope of a normal school day. So now diving into our capital projects, I wanted to just take a moment and talk with you about the primary funding sources, because I don't know about you, but for me, sometimes this part gets a little complicated. It's a lot to keep straight, trying to remember all the different pots of money. So we have the two-thirds bonds funds, that comes from our county commissioners. Every two years, it is 8.5 million. Those are the funds that we use to complete our 10-year capital plan, that we are constantly updating and, and keeping track of. In 2016, when we did the bond, we actually placed capital projects onto that bond to be able to cover things that we couldn't get done with that two-thirds bonds fund. So essentially a gap filler. These items were all voter approved, and those items were determined basically looking at historical work orders, looking at our preventative maintenance tickets, to see how often we were going back in between those cycles to fix that item if it was failing, how many times we replaced parts, things of that nature. So that we were able to take 29.4 million, spread over an eight-year period, to try to fill in that gap from the 8.5 every two. And then additionally, there is one more smaller pot of money. It's called the capital outlay. A lot of times you'll hear us refer to it as mobile modular money. Originally, that 1.735 was allocated to support capacity and do things with mobile modules as needed. There is not a specific item that that needs to be used for, and so a lot of times it gets used to fill in those gaps that we have as things come up, and those project lists get, get presented to you. And so again, I'm not going to dive into these hyperlinks here, but I wanted to give you an opportunity to see in each of those categories, for capital projects, what we've been tackling throughout this year, and what we'd be tackling this summer. And then the third, excuse me, the fourth bullet there that says the 10-year capital project spending, I have tried multiple times today, but that file link is not working. So when I get done here this evening, I will upload that link, so that you can review it, and so the public will have access to it as well. We shared that 10-year capital project spending list with our facility advisory committee a few weeks ago, so that they could see a snapshot of those expenditures, and see how the money was spread out through all the different schools over that 10-year period, to show equity, to show gaps, to show all that information for a clear snapshot for you. I did list on here a few highlights of the items that are taking place this summer. You can see we have quite a few roofing replacements that'll be taking place, a few HVAC full replacements that will be taking place. We have a kitchen renovation out at West High School, a lighting upgrade at Southwest, sorry, excuse me, South Fork, and the boiler replacement at Clemens Elementary School. So moving on to facilities and our warehouse, there are a lot of things that happened over at our warehouse, in and out, quite a few moving pieces. But this slide here shows you the work orders that they've received. These guys do a lot of heavy lifting throughout the district, making shuffles for schools, for files, all those different things. They also take care of repairing all the custodial equipment throughout the district to support our teams out there. And they will continue to work on a number of work orders and moves throughout the summer, and I'll get to those here in a little bit. For furniture, our furniture specialist has been working with Karen Mayer for Media Services, doing some media center renovations. We've done five of those so far, and they will be continuing five more of those throughout the course of the summer. There's some really great projects, some really cool stuff going into those spaces. So if you do not have a list of those schools, I would love to provide that to you, so you can take a look at that great work. Excuse me. And then for summer, we have a few moves that are taking place. Kennedy going over to Winston-Salem Prep. The Wiley move is already underway, and Colin has been keeping you up to date on the North Phasing project, and that will continue on throughout the next year. We added five positions this year to support our facility specialists, and ultimately support our principals in our schools. Those are our area custodial leads. They are each paired with our facility specialists for the five area superintendents, to provide support, do facility inspections, audits, enter work orders for the school, so that they don't have to focus on those things. Those area custodial leads are also working directly with our custodians to provide training. That's an area that we've had a gap for a little while, in really supporting our custodial teams in ongoing training. And they've already held some trainings with those teams to keep them abreast of what's going on this summer, what their expectations are, and how we are there to support them. So that work is well underway, and I'm very proud of that. For summer projects, our warehousing team will be working on a massive textbook overhaul. They are currently working with Nicolette Grant and her team on the receiving, labeling, distribution, and then also the recycling and disposable of old textbooks. So that will be an ongoing process throughout the summer. It is quite a feat, and we will, we are hoping to get all of that accomplished before the start of school year to support those kids. And so that'll, that's a big one. I don't think we are quite prepared for how much textbooks, how many textbooks are going to be coming in. Also doing some technology support for the one-to-one device rollout. And we are also going to be looking at doing an MOU with the county for some additional storage space, a few things that we can move out for a short period of time, so that we can facilitate all those textbooks and technology needs as well. So we appreciate their support there. All right. Rolling on into transportation, Human Resources has done a fabulous job working with our transportation leadership on developing a driver recruitment program. We dubbed that program Get on the Bus. It is an intensive recruiting program. We've been doing referral programs with internal staff to try to recruit bus drivers, doing a bus driver training program. One of the challenges is going through, getting the permits, doing the driver training, behind-the-wheel training, all of those things, and then of course, paying for your CDL and your DOT physical, that's all required. And so we have been working to bring staff members onboard, make them a transportation assistant, they get to experience what it's like to be on the bus, working while also then going and doing their training and completing that process with us, and guiding them through, excuse me, guiding them through that process to completion, so that then they are ready to go ahead and get on the bus with us. We are certainly still experiencing a driver shortage, even though we have really been trying to target this process. And we will continue to do that work this summer with the support of Human Resources and our chief finance officer. You can see here the current list of our drivers and 60 buses without drivers. So we will be certainly working on that. And they will be hosting their back-to-school training in August over a three-day period, to make sure that drivers have everything that they need. We did drive buses this year, but we always like to do a big refresher for them on student discipline, unescorted students, safety processes, and things of that nature. So speaking of unescorted students, I did want to share a little bit of data with you. So an unescorted student is a child that is pre-K through third grade, or excuse me, second grade, that is, gets dropped off in the afternoon, and there is not a parent guardian or an older sibling there to escort them to their residence. We do not leave those students at those stops per policy, and we return them to the next closest school. This year, we did their homeschool, just because of the nature of our transportation model, but it is typically the next school, so that that bus can continue their route and not delay other students. So you can see over the 83 school days, the total number that we had of occurrences was 608. In total, the number of students impacted was 232, which is an average of about three students per day. That number is certainly higher when we transport more students during a normal school year, but is certainly something that is on our radar, that we deal with on a daily basis, that, that needs to be focused on us to make, help make improvements. So currently, we've been working on our summer school routing. That information will be received June 14 by schools, to be able to share out with families, so that they'll be ready to go for our summer programs that we have taking place. And we will also start working on fall routing based on the capacity and the enrollment for our current schools. So there's a few things that I wanted to share with you all that parents may be asking about as well. And so current bus stop information at this point has been shared with our schools as of June 3, so that it is ready to go out and report cards to families. That is information on if the child has a current stop, what that stop looks like in our system, so that the parents can then submit to the school data manager any changes that they have, or potentially make a new stop request, so that we can begin getting those processed. We are currently asking that schools and families work to try to get those in place June, excuse me, July 16, so that we can get, sorry, July 6, so that we can get that routing underway, get those routes finalized. We do have to kind of establish a cutoff point for that, so that we can get everything wrapped up, and then get all the letters out to the schools, so they can communicate those stops with families. And we do not make any stop adjustments for the first 10 school days, so that drivers can run those routes, so that families know when those stops are expected to be at their house. And then we will work to make some adjustments. I do want to applaud the board for making data managers 12-month positions. I think this was a step in the right direction, especially from a transportation lens, because one of the things that we've seen historically in elementary schools is, the data managers don't return until August 1, and then they have a flood of bus stop changes that have to be added. And a lot of times, that's really challenging to get completed. And so with them able to be in the school buildings in July and get those entered in real time, I really hope that that is going to support our routing effort, and ultimately support our students. So this information will be shared with schools, most likely the week of August 14, so that they have what they need before school begins. And so I did want to take a few moments and just talk about what goes into that routing process. I have learned quite a deal, a bit in my last year on what routing looks like and all the different things, help to our transportation leaders that have been educating me. And it is, it is cumbersome. So first and foremost, we take a look at student ridership measures. You know, we're looking at the bus stop walk distance. You know, there is legislation, policy around what that distance is. However, there are other things that go into play there, looking at, is the school and the students resident across the street from a four-lane highway? Do we want a child crossing that to get to their school via foot? No, we don't. And so there are exceptions that have to be made there in that process. That takes an individual person making that road assessment, and putting that into the system as we learn about those scenarios. Also, always taking into mind student ride times. We know that students don't want to get up any earlier than they have to in the morning. We don't want them on the bus any longer than they have to be as well. And so that's always something to take in consideration with all the various school options between choice and magnet as well. Also looking at the number of runs per school. An average school bus is anywhere from 66 to 72 seats, but that doesn't always mean that you're going to maximize that number if it's not the best route for that, for that group of students, if it puts them on the bus for a longer period of time. So there could be more runs. Or there may be one bus that makes a shorter run and runs two runs for a school. There are various ways of, of doing that to support those efforts, so that other buses can go on to other schools. Also looking at the average load, thinking about arrival and departure windows. If the arrival window at a school is a little bit larger, that gives a bus more opportunity to run shorter runs and drop kids off more often, maybe sit and have breakfast, do some independent learning, or some reading, or some small group activities in their classroom, so that there's a little bit of a buffer there to support students arriving to school on time. Also keeping in mind our school bell tiers. We have, you know, a variety of school bell times. Our first one is at 7:25, high school is at 8:55. And so there's a lot of time for that first run for our middle schools, and then a lot of time at the end for our high schools. But there's a pretty big crunch right there in the middle window, where you have three different tiers for elementary schools, and a larger number of student ridership at that age level as well. Also thinking about our total buses available, our drivers that are available, and then ultimately also assessing fuel economy, fuel efficiency, and mileage, because as you know, our funding from the state comes from an efficiency formula. And so every effort here is always student safety, student ride time, getting to school on time, and then ultimately that efficiency as well, to maximize our funding. So as we take a look at 2122, through June and August, we are going to be completing that optimization of those routes to get the school year started. We will be planning for full transportation for the fall. I know there's been some questions about that, so I wanted to make sure I said that out loud this evening, full transportation for fall of 2021. As we get into the school year, and those routes are underway, September through December, we will continue to optimize. That is something that we always do. There are always one-off scenarios that we're looking at, trying to make an improvement. We'll be reviewing our magnet stops and our choice geographic routes, if there's any gaps. We have what's called naturally occurring magnet stops, in addition to our magnet express stops. If there's more than 10 students at a location, we make it a residential-style stop. And so we're always assessing those things to try to maximize the support there. We will also analyze other district methods that they use to support these various choice programs and bell tiers, to see if there's anything out there that we have not considered, that we can maybe do a hybrid of, or even replicate here in our district to support transportation. And then if there's anything that comes from all of that study and information, we are hoping to have that together by the first of the year, January 2022, to potentially make any recommendations that we would want to make to the board for your consideration. Some enhancements that we're doing, I'm not going to read through all of these, but I, I've been really pleased and, and just in all of our leadership team in transportation and the work that they've been doing, they've experienced a lot of change, not just with COVID, but in leadership and staff, adjustments to positions, really analyzing what is needed in that department to support this effort. And so they have really amped up their internal communications to make sure drivers know what is taking place on a, on a, on a monthly basis via their newsletter. They've developed a driver advisory council to meet quarterly, so that they can hear the voice of the drivers and things that need to be addressed. And also doing some office-level bi, excuse me, bi-weekly meetings, so that they can discuss issues and different things and keep that communication going. They're doing a number of process assessments, you can see there, pre and post trips, the way that they assign new drivers, working on handbooks and information, again, all about communication here, and, and good process improvement that the team has really needed. And then in addition, they're going to be focusing on a great deal of training this summer, talking about accident response, customer service, conflict resolution, and so on, to really make sure that everyone on this team has what they need to be successful. And last but not least, for transportation, we had 26 new buses come in for our allotment from the state, and all 26 of those new buses are getting the extended stop arms. So you will see these rollouts. So, you will see these rollouts, and then they are also planned for the next round of 22 buses we have coming in on our new allotment, and we will continue this process with every allotment we have here on after to do these extended stop arms. We do already have stop-arm cameras on all of our buses, and so if there is an incident or occurrence, we will have it on camera, and we always do a stop-arm violation report for the state every year as well. And we will look to do probably a big campaign with Brent Campbell and his team in the fall to roll this out and remind folks that these are going to be out there, and if they don't stop, they're going to hit them.
Lauren, do we pay, I know that the yellow buses are state buses, but enhancements like that, does that come from local dollars?
It does. So, anytime we get a yellow bus from the state, we then have to add the radios, we have to add our GPS tablets, we add other devices like these. Those are all things that get added after the fact when the bus gets here. They are not things that you select as part of selecting your bus with the state.
I had a question about, this is going back a couple of slides, this is about the 10-day freeze on the routes.
Sure.
If a family has moved over the summer, would they need to change their address prior, would the route change like prior to that 10-day freeze if a family moved somewhere else over the summer?
Yes, they would. And so, when they get those letters with their report cards, if they have an existing stop, it's going to tell them what that is, and it's going to prompt them with what to do. If they move and they don't, they previously didn't use a bus, they would not have that letter because they would not have had an existing stop, but they would be expected to still call the school and change their address so that any communication from the school would make it home to that residence, and that would then kickstart that process, do you need a bus stop, and what else do you need for support?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, last but not least.
I just also wanted to say how excited I am about those extended arms. It has been years trying to get those onto our buses, and it's a wonderful thing. It's really important and will protect our children.
Yes, they have made some enhancements to that stop arm that we believe that we can now move this direction. When we do the pre- and post-checks and we have to do 30-day checks on every single bus in our fleet, this gets added to that, and there are some bearings and things that have to be replaced every so often, and like I said, they've made some improvements that have made this much more attractive to being able to maintain and keep it safe.
I'm so excited.
I have a quick comment. Is it possible if we, can we send a fabulous Brent Campbell message that says, if you have an address change, please let your school know? Is it possible to have a quick pop call?
I think we can certainly work with his team to make sure that families know that that information's coming home and adjustments, for sure.
As far as the yellow buses, you know, everything sounds like that's going great, and I love the arms also. Occasionally, we talk about athletic buses, the blue buses. I mean, are we in good shape on our blue buses as far as running and the maintenance and all like that also since we're on buses?
We are. So, we originally had a fleet of 110 for the last few years. That's now at 112 because we purchased the buses for Lewisville.
Yeah.
You all also approved three additional buses to come in. We did drop that a little bit during COVID with the funds available, and those should be in soon. We got a little behind the state order, and so that got delayed, but they should be here by the fall, we believe, for those three schools. And so, those are in pretty decent shape. We feel pretty good with that replacement cycle at the moment. I do think we have about 20, 22 buses that are at that 30-year threshold, if I remember back from the spring when we presented that. So, it would be great to have some additional funding to kind of get those up to where they need to be because we are to a point where parts will probably stop being available. As we pull buses, because we're not increasing our fleet number, we always pull all the parts we possibly can from the buses we pull off the road to continue to make those repairs. So, that is a very strategic process for that team.
Great, thanks for the update on those blue buses.
You're welcome. All right, so moving into child nutrition, a few highlights over the course of the 2020-21 school year. And so, during the closure, August through October, when all of our students were on virtual learning, we had 40 schools sites that were open to the public, and we had 130-plus community sites roaming around serving meals to our families. As we did the phased re-entry that began in November of 2020, we rolled out breakfast kiosks because we didn't want students gathering in the cafeterias. That process worked really well. Kids could grab their breakfast and immediately go straight on to class and take their breakfast with them, and we did a number of modified lunch services, allowed the schools to work independently on what was going to work best for their layout for those lunch services. We also did end-of-day take-home meals on Tuesdays for Flex Wednesday and on Fridays for the weekend. One of the great things that the USDA allowed flexibility for throughout the school year was the service of weekend meals. So, where we would normally only be allowed to serve five meals or 10, I guess, breakfast and lunch throughout the week, we were able to do seven days of meal service this year and support kids the entire week. And then, so we also did seven-day meal kits that we rolled out in the spring. I have a slide here later on, I'll show you just a glimpse of what some of those look like. Those were a huge success. Families really enjoyed being able to take these huge packages of food home, actually work with their kids, make those snacks. They got a full gallon of milk for the whole week for each child, so if you were a household of three children, you walked away from the school with these boxes of food and three gallons of milk, one for each of your kids. They were a huge hit, very, very successful. So, August through October, just that snapshot where all of our students were on virtual, we did 775,000 meals to our students. And then, just to give you a full snapshot over the course of the year, this is through the end of May, we did just over 3 million meals. While that is not in the 7 million number that we would typically do, this is still a huge feat for the structure that we were dealing with this year, and it just goes to show you how many of our families truly needed the service this year and took advantage of it. And we will, of course, continue this process through the summer as we always do. So, this year, we're going to have 23 school meal sites open. These are open to the public. All children under the age of 18 can come and eat. They do not need to be a Winston-Salem or South County school student. They can be a two-year-old, they can go to a private or charter school, it doesn't matter. Those will also support our summer programs, and that service will be available June 14 to August 12. We also will have 40 community stops this summer, and for those 40 community stops, we're actually going to continue those seven-day meal kits. And so, we will go to 10 sites each of the four days of the week, give those families the seven-day meal kits so that families don't have to continually come out every single day to get a meal. We know that they may be trying to get back to work, supporting multiple family members, and so we're going to target each of them one day of the week. We will also have two hubs that will be supporting all of those mobile sites, and families can also choose to come and pick up a seven-day meal bundle from those locations as well. If anybody would like to register to do the meal pickups, there is a form on the WSFCS website that they can go and register for that pickup time to know that that box will be available to them at the schools.
How many, how many does the meal bundle serve? It just looks fabulous.
Yeah, so each bundle is for one student.
One student.
Mm-hmm, and it's that student's meals for the seven days.
Okay, okay.
And I'll actually, I'll just jump ahead. So, this kind of gives you a snapshot of the three, the themes that were available. So, there was an Italian theme, there was an American classic theme, there was a South of the Border theme, excuse me, and that was in chicken and beef. And so, you could kind of select the one you wanted, or I honestly can't remember if they did each week, one was available, I don't remember. But the whole thing has a theme, and you select that, and it has all the information on how to heat it, how to prepare it. I actually had a friend of mine send me a wonderful video of her and her son making the meals, and he was making a little pizza and learning how to do all that. So, that parent made it an educational process as well. It was really great to see. All right, so an outlook for 2021-2022. This department typically has about 400 hourly associates. I didn't talk a whole lot here about staffing. They too are experiencing some staffing shortages, and they are working with Human Resources to try to recruit those kitchen assistants and be creative in those efforts to make sure they have what they need to support those meals when they get back. I do appreciate Parkland High School for hosting this, for this team this summer, and they're going to be getting back to basics. Meal service has looked very, very different this year, and so they're really going to be focusing on customer service, meal components, because one of the great things about the 21-22 school year is that the USDA has approved free meals for every single child for the entire school year. Very, very pleased to see that for these families and these students, and we will be getting back to some of the other regulations that we've been able to forego this year, such as the meal components and requirements that we love so much, but the meals will be free, and that is the biggest piece, and that is what I part you with this evening because it is such exciting news. And so, I'll open it up for any other questions that you may have.
Will you continue the breakfast kiosk so kids pick up breakfast and bring it into the classroom?
So, that'll vary some. The Child Nutrition Department is currently working on rolling some information out to the schools to let them know about the meals being free next year, to let them know that if they wish to continue the breakfast kiosk, that that is certainly doable, but it might need to look a little bit different because of those other regulations that are coming back. And so, they will work with each school on an individual basis as to how that will fit best in that environment.
And looking at the vacancies for both cafeteria staff and the bus drivers, do we recruit our recent or soon-to-be recent graduates for that? Like, I think to target them, just knowing so many who are taking a gap year or either not enrolled in the next stage of their education or they're not employed yet, that they could be good candidates?
We certainly have not targeted that group. That is something we could certainly look at doing. I remember there was a time where high school seniors drove buses.
Yep.
15-year-olds did.
Yes.
I wondered also.
That just seems scary.
Is there a minimum age for a CDL?
I'm sorry?
Is there a minimum age for a CDL?
I believe at this point, it's 18, but I don't know that for sure.
I wondered also when we were talking about maintenance, if there was anything, you know, we could do with some of the students since, I mean, you know, most places are looking for workers and didn't know if the school was looking into some of our young people for maintenance-type work, which, you know, you don't have to have a degree, you can just kind of go out there and do it. But I hope that's something that we'll look at. We had like five young boys that came, and they came from the schools here to work for our company during the summer, and it was fantastic just to be able to give them a learning experience. It may not be something they ever want to do again, but they made money, you know, during the summer, and they learned a trade. And when I was seeing the maintenance and I was seeing, you know, there was a decline, maybe that's something that we need to put in place also.
We do have a number of college students that come and work with our maintenance and warehousing groups in the summer. Some of them, I believe, are also going to be working with our technology department this year as well, so we have done some of that. We do have a few apprentice positions within the maintenance division, and I believe we actually have a meeting set up this Friday to talk about some enhancements with that, whether that be with our CTE programs within our own schools or some of the other schools within our community, to really work to provide that apprenticeship to come in, to shadow some individuals, and get them on the team early so they can see those benefits and support the school.
Well, I'd also talk with the Chamber of Commerce, and they seem very, very interested in maybe partnering with us on something like that. So, you know, it's just a suggestion, but it might be something that really worked well.
Yes, that's great feedback.
I was wondering, Tricia, if like, if the county and the city are experiencing, I mean, they have some of their maintenance people and things that do the same jobs that we have within the school system. I guess I got two questions. One would be, are they having difficulty or do you even know filling positions, and what would their pay scale? I mean, is our pay scale really off? Is it on? I mean, where do we, where do we fall within that? Do you know?
I cannot speak to the city and county. Daryl's welcome to join me if he happens to know, but from a pay standpoint, I think we are going through those assessments. You know, we've done kitchen assistants, we've done custodial staff. I know Jevelyn and Pat Roca are certainly working through looking at those items, and we will continue to do that, to really look at our pay grades, market value, there's other trades, and see if there is that gap and make those assessments to see if adjustments need to be made. Did you want to comment on county or city?
I just want to make sure that, I mean, if we're, that we're either in line or if we're not, that, I mean, since we're all in the same county, I think we need to be.
Yeah, they are experiencing the same issues we are. Their pay's a little higher than ours. Quite honestly, a little bit of challenge we have in that we need to talk with our friends in Raleigh is that, you know, as of January 1, the medical benefits taken away in the long run. So, you're not going to be tenured and be able to get your medical, and so we need to, we need to leverage some of that. That's a point that's going to really hurt us on the recruiting side of things somewhat, so we need to kind of be cognizant of that. That is the benefit that county and city employees have over us at this point that we're struggling with a little bit.
So, they will continue to have that, and we will not.
That is correct.
So, I mean, that in itself is a huge.
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 And that is for anybody that's hired since January 1 of this past year, so that's kind of going forward. It's going to impact all of our employees, I mean, not just our maintenance employees.
Right. And I also have a question. Where the lottery money, in all the money that you were talking about earlier with the construction, I know at least unless it's changed, that money, that the county commissioners hold that money, and they release it to us, and so therefore, where is it accounted for in all that that you just gave us?
So, just so you know, in the beginning, when lottery money came available to this district, it was around 7.3 million a year. It has trended over the last three to four years to about 3.2. And so, you may recall, once a year, I come to you and I say, the county's requesting these 3-point-odd million dollars for lottery funds. So, they're still utilizing those funds to pay down the debt on the 2006 bond. They've refinanced some of that debt, but they're still utilizing those funds for that cause at this point.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, so it's reflected in that as opposed to the others?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
So, do we have questions for Lauren around anything that was presented? Obviously, our, all of these folks have been extremely busy, and I think they're, he rose so many times behind the scenes every year, but especially this year, when we were, you know, when we were closed, and I don't think they missed a day, right?
We did not. These teams did not miss a day.
So, I mean, that's huge, and we can't thank them enough, especially this year.
Yeah, to your point, I mean, everybody, even down to those folks, everybody thinks they got, you know, teachers, and they did. I mean, they really had to change their game totally, but as well, so did everyone else. So, you know, it's just reflected in what you just reported, which is.
And thank you for doing that every year because I think we hit on some highlights on a normal year, but it's nice to do that and recap so that we really remember all those things that they do, because again, it's, you know, I know especially probably for the nine of us, it's very, people sometimes just don't take the time to tell us all the things that people do above and beyond, and we know that that happens every day, so it's good to see that.
Absolutely.
So, other questions, comments?
Sorry, I got one more. So, in relation, I just, I'm trying to put all this in perspective from where we stand with the city and with the county. So, square footage-wise, I think that was a wonderful fact that you gave us. Do we have any knowledge of like what their ratio to the number of workers that they have and the square footage that they have to maintain and all that? You may or may not, Daryl, or would that be something that would be worthy of asking?
Yeah, there's, you know, they have a lot less square footage than we do, quite honestly, and so their numbers are actually much lower. So, the real, Lauren gives you some good information, which you need to know, let's take HVAC, for instance, we have one employee for 1.2 million square feet. Think about that number. 1.2 million square feet is the equivalent of about 10 schools. I'm not saying that, Tricia, don't get, I'm not saying that to bellyache about staff, I'm just telling you that from a workload perspective, it is really challenging in some of our, and so electrical, plumbing, and HVAC are struggling. I mean, we just have to be honest with you and say, we struggle with that because of our productivity rates. I will say at the city and county level, they have a little less square footage, their productivity rates are a little bit better, right? And so, that's why you're always going to see us ask for a couple, two or three positions every year we go through the budget process, because the industry standard is not 1.2 million square feet. It's not 100,000 square feet. Like Lauren gave you the kind of summary of all of our employees, but when you break it down to individual, it is huge. And so, it's especially challenging with hiring people and the other issues we've talked about tonight, that number could get larger. And so, providing quality service, and our people are really conscientious about customers. customer service, and responding quickly. And what that ends up doing a lot of times is, they're working when you're at home, when we're at home, and two in the morning, they're there. I mean, it happens more than I can tell you, quite honestly.
Well, I mean, I, I just, I know that they've been there fixing heat, or air, or whatever in the middle of the night, because you can't have children come to school the next day and be cold, or be burning. And I, and I guess that's my point. I just want to make sure, I just see our employees, especially in some of these areas that, that we normally don't see, or even hear about until you tell us, that the things in this county that, that money goes for, and in this city that money goes for, is equitable, and that, and that, you know, we are, that, that the schools are not being shortchanged in any way in, in those, in those areas. And I think that's really important, that, I just, I would just, you know, like an accounting thing of, I'd just like to see where we stand in relation to other employees that are paid with either state or taxpayer county monies, to make sure that we're, you know.
Yeah.
We're doing okay, because we shouldn't, I mean, we shouldn't get the short end of the stick, so to speak.
So, to piggyback on Marilyn's point, we might also compare our employees to the state universities, which we have a couple in our community, and they are also paid by state tax dollars, with a minimum of fifteen dollars an hour. And I think it would be very useful to let our legislators know what the comparison, not only of the pay for people who are doing like work, but the workload for the people who are doing like work. So...
Yeah, our biggest challenge is going to be the retirement issue over the next few years. There's quite a few. I mean, we've been fortunate, a lot of people have been loyal to us for twenty-eight, thirty years. On the flip side, they're all going to be eligible close to one time. I mean, we're going to get to a point where about thirty percent of our people can walk out tomorrow, so it's going to be challenging. So, anyway, I would just like to take one second, because I really want to thank Bruce and Vicky. I know they've been patiently back there, and they're coming up later. But, Ms. Calvert-Hayes, you made the mention of the fact of, and Lauren, about our apprenticeship program. Those two folks have been instrumental in making this happen for us, and we're, we're going to look to continue to grow this. We have a, if you know at the Career Center, we have a, what do you call it, the food program there, that culinary program that can lead into our child nutrition programs. You know, so we're looking at all of our trades, auto body, how they can lead into our garages. And so, we've had some conversation, do we start recruiting at the middle school level as we move through this? And so I just want you to know, there is, there is something that started really small, that's going to get really big here. And our hope is to fill these retirement positions, is to do some of it from the bottom up, and some of it from the outside in, so that we have some good combination of this going forward, to be able to fill those positions. But they've been instrumental, and just wonderful people to work with, and I thank them for that.
Other comments, questions? Ms. Parker, what are you?
I'm standing with her.
I think you're good. You're on a good roll. I appreciate those questions and comments. Okay, awesome. Thank you again. So, Daryl, I think you're up to talk about our RFP for facilities audit.
To my friends in the room, I apologize again for our time, and we'll get you out of here by ten o'clock, I promise you. We'll finish up here shortly. But, so yeah, I've got a couple of little really kind of quick updates I'd like to share with you. One is that we've had some conversation about doing a facility audit through the district. I think they mentioned Guilford's done one. I've received the RFP for Guilford, Cabarrus County, a couple out of state that I, that I have received to review. I just want to share with you before we roll out an RFP, to make sure that you're good with this process as we move forward. We will be looking at somewhere between nine hundred thousand and a million dollars for this assessment. It's going to be somewhere between ten and twelve cent a square foot, is the estimate, to be all inclusive. So I just, I just want to share that, we have not identified the funding source for that, and we need to do that. If the board chooses to, tells us to move forward, we need to look at, it will take about a six to nine month process to go through a total evaluation of all of our facilities, in which we're going to include other than just inventory items. It will be all encumbrance of everything, instructional, athletics, or transfer, everything. So, obviously, we can water that down a little bit if you'd like to, but we are still looking at probably a six to nine month process. And I do want you to know, we do have some really good data around our five year, every five years, we have to do a report to the State of North Carolina, which we just did this past year, Colan and Justin Dyson, who spent a great deal of time on preparing that document. Basically, that is a document that kind of preps your bond. You know, you'll get a lot of good data for bond referendums in the future. But there is some good data there as well. And I do think a positive of that is, it gives you a great inventory system for everything that we have in this district. So at this point, really, the update is to kind of make sure that you're comfortable moving forward. We do need to identify funds and probably come back and get that, that area kind of approved of where those funds would come from. And so we could bring that back at the end of June if you'd like for us to.
Daryl, I will say that, I know in Guilford County, the county commissioners and the school board went half and half, because it was an investment by the county, because they have to, of course, establish the bond for our capital project. So, it was just, you know, a partnership in completing the facility report. So maybe that's something that we can present to the county commissioners.
Absolutely.
And it also seems like something we could use S R dollars for, considering a lot of what's going to be evaluated has to do with student safety and health.
We will work on Andrea to kind of bring back some guidelines and some rules around that. And so we can put that on the future agenda, Lisa, if you don't mind, and we'll bring it back to the board. I just wanted to let you know kind of the timeline, the cost. We would have to go through a bid process, because it is over the required amount for the, for the state. So we would have to bid this process out, and go through that, and bring it back for approval at such time.
Daryl, what have the districts who have undergone this process been able to do with the information once they have it?
Yeah, Guilford was kind of interesting to me, because they were kind of preparing a bond and got, I think there was some question in, in, in the use of some bond dollars, and how things were kind of put together there. Cabarrus put it together basically as an inventory list of all items they had in their district to present to their community. You know, you know, we have X number of this, that, and the other. They didn't go really in depth, they kept it to brick and mortar, quite honestly. But most of them, what I've, some of them have used it for bond referendum, some of them have used it to look at feeder patterns, and part of their plan is around optimization and their feeder patterns. You know, we're working with another contractor, doing some of that now, so we would, I don't think we need to include that. That is, that is not in this ten to this twelve cent a square foot cost. So, I think that we're, we would be, we're good there. So, I think for us, you know, it just kind of tells, you know, we've had a lot of talk about equities, and I, and I would really encourage you to look at the report, one of the links that Lauren sent in her report around the tenure plan, and you can see every school where every penny's been spent over this last ten years, because I think it tells a lot, and I think you'll be proud of that report, I really do. And, but, it will come back to us and, and tell us where we have some inefficiencies and inequities. And so, and I think, I think we know where some of those are, but this would just kind of dot the i and cross the t.
Quiet, quiet.
Yes ma'am.
I will say that the tenure plan, those projects, they were shared with the Facility Advisory Committee on our last call. And, and I think people were really taken back by, honestly, by all the work that was done, and where it was done, but then also that there's still just, there's a lot of needs. It's, you know, it's, it's a little, little overwhelming sometimes when you really think about all that. You know, I, I think, I like, you know, I can kind of almost see too, if we, if we go through this process and we identify these things. And I think some things we know, there are some projects out there that, that we know are, are probably inequities. I don't think we have to identify that. But then there's a lot of things that, you know, we're just not aware of, because we just said, you know, we have a big footprint. So, can we do this, I mean, is this a thing where you can, you can say, we want this all done, but can we, do we, do we start in different areas? Like, we brought back, we brought back middle school sports, and we know that we have modular units sitting on perfectly good baseball fields, that, so you can't use it. So, I mean, can we, can we narrow in and say, we need to start in this area first? Does that, does that make, I mean, is that something we can do and say, this is kind of a priority, and can we look at this, and do the whole thing, but maybe we need to do it in segments that, that makes sense in staff's mind?
Yeah, I think we can draft the, the scope of work to any, any way that you would like to do that. I mean, I don't think that's problematic at all.
I agree with Dana on that, because where we are right now, there's, there's a lot of work out there that probably we are not really realizing, just sitting here as board members. And I would like to know, we look at roofing, we look at all the different things, and some of it is quite expensive. And it's something that's going to be coming up relatively soon, but we are not aware of that. So I think if we could combine something to let us know where we stand on these schools, and what they're going to need, and maybe when that is going to be taking place. Are we going to have roofing of, say, ten schools at one time, or, or is it going to be two schools, or where do we stand? For the facility group, I think that would be something, that would be extremely important for us to know exactly where we are, and the monies that are going to have to be spent sooner, rather than later.
Yep.
So, what I'll say is that I think that, first of all, the, anytime there's talk about an expense like this, the critique, I think, from community members, and maybe from some of us, is, you know, why spend this money when we sort of already know a lot about what the issues are? But I would say that, one of the reasons, what I want to make sure of in this process, is that whatever we receive from the report is very thorough, to the point where, you know, I want to understand not just about, you know, athletic facilities, I want to know which middle schools have an actual dance studio, and which middle schools have the little tile floor, or we just put down a little, you know, I, I think so that we're able to see, just sort of from a holistic point of view, and then sort of look at the data to prioritize these things. And also to understand that there are some schools that are sort of the only schools that have a certain thing, and maybe balance that, and see, well, maybe, what are the things that we want every school to have, and then what are the things where it's only feasible that a couple of schools may have in terms of, in terms of, you know, the actual capabilities or things within the building? Because I think that, up to this point, it seems like there's been conversation in silos about what particular needs, or, or when certain groups rally behind like one individual cause. But we have a lot of different needs in our district that may not go, that are, that people may not be advocating for as loudly. But like, you know, for instance, when I went to Philo Hill this morning, there's like, they have these little shutters in the gym, and like, one is just like, open to the outside. And they're like, oh, it's been there, and, you know, it's just, it's, it's like, it's just been there, and that's just the way it is. And so in my head, I'm like, well, wow, that needs to be fixed. And that may be like a, a, a quick fix, or that may be something where like, people just over time have tried to fix, and then it's like, we kind of kick it down the curb. So I think from, in a report like this, because of it, because it's so expensive, I just want to make sure that it's going to provide us with very large amounts of data that we can kind of dig into.
Yeah, it, well, I think you'll find it very encumbrance, and I think you'll see some of that come back in the standards report as well, that we'll present, some of those kind of, some of the same kind of items as well, so.
Yeah. I liked Lita's idea about sort of chunks, because we could, obviously, this is not something that could be given to the board all at once, but if, as each chunk is being done, we get a chance to hear some of it, that will be so helpful over the year.
Yeah.
And, and so, kind of the format of the report, obviously, it would identify the needs. Well then, will it, will we have ways to say, whatever this is, and this is the potential cost at today's rate?
Yeah, it'll, it'll have some cost estimates in there. And at that point, I think you have the opportunity to maybe us create a rubric, and then if you want to evaluate that assessment on how we move forward, that, that's possible as well. And in fact, there's actually, one of the RFPs is actually a sample rubric that one of the other districts used, as they used a plan to move forward, and how they prioritize what they wanted to do. Obviously, you got to apply funding, find the funding for it, but what you find, what I found around here is, you got to get it into a plan first, and then you, then funding kind of follows the plan, right?
Well, and that's, that was going to be my next point, is that, you know, once we identify some things, do we, can we talk about, you know, I think we know major projects, things that are really large, are going to have to go in the bond. Those, you know, those obviously big ticket items. But, but some of these, you know, may be identified. I think, you know, Board Member Bohannon brought up like a dance studio, what's really a studio. And, you know, I'm envisioning, you know, I really like public-private partnerships, and so, you know, do we have availability, I mean, do we have the ability, once we have some things identified, where if I'm, I don't know, if I'm the owner of a dance studio, would, you know, would I want to sponsor that room, or help with some of those things? Because, you know, I have a passion for it. I mean, I know, you know, we brought in middle school sports, and we were able to get, you know, tennis rackets and balls and things like that, because people want to, you know, if that's something that you have a passion for, you, you want to encourage kids to participate. So, I mean, I think a lot of those things can, could be done that way. And then, you know, the other thing, and it, and it's been brought up, and so, and you know, I don't want to say it's like the elephant in the room, but, you know, sometimes it's just like, okay, we just put this thing out here. So, you know, we, we talked about, we need this to identify things that we know are not, that we have issues with. But I think there are a couple of things that we've talked about through the years, and one that comes right to the surface is the RJ Reynolds Stadium. And that's one of those things that would be a public-private partnership. If we were to, if we were to try to pursue that before we, we talk, first of all, before we went into this, this study, do we have, do we have funds, or do we have savings, or do we have anything that would currently at this time, pay for that?
So, I have, if you don't mind, I'm going to share our conversation around the plan, if you're okay with that?
Of course.
So, my recommendation is that if we want to be equitable around what we did in the bond referendum, so at Mount Tabor and Glen, we spent three million dollars, that we could propose some funds of around three million dollars to, towards contribution to the stadium, to come out of our savings from our capital projects, not bond projects. Remember, Lauren showed you three different options up here. I'm not talking about our 2016 bond, because our voters didn't approve that, right? But your, your savings from other projects that we currently don't, I mean, could we spend them? Yes. But we could set some funds aside over a period of time, without saying, I'm up to you, I would commit to doing it this year, next year. We would say, at a period of time, when we get to the three million mark, we could contribute towards that project. I recommended that we also spend a million dollars at Parkland High School, and do something on their current field at their school, that they could play soccer there, or field hockey or lacrosse there. And then, they, they, they have told me they want to stay at Deaton Thompson for football, which is, which is great. Because that, I'm just telling you, that project's got to be in the bond next time anyway. So, that, that was my proposal, if, if the board wanted to, to contribute to that. And, but I couldn't sit in here and tell you, are there some savings today? Yes, there are. But could I sit here and tell you that there's not three million, and could I tell you a timeline of when that could happen? Not really, because I might bid a job tomorrow, that might be a hundred thousand over budget. But my responsibility would be able to come back to this board on a more frequent basis, whether that's monthly, quarterly, semi-annually, what you choose to, to have me come back and give you an update of all those projects, and sort of an accounting measure behind all those. And at that point, you can make a decision, if that's, if that is the direction that you would like to go. We are certainly prepared to, to manage that and do that. We are certainly prepared to, to manage that and do that. But I do want to make sure to the general public understands that we are not talking about bond dollars here. We're talking about true capital dollars and, and savings only. We're not taking anything away from a school. I'm not going to go to a school, I'm not going to go to Bolton and say, I got to pull some money from your project to fund this. That's not going to happen. I would never recommend that to you. I would say it wasn't going to happen. I would say I would not recommend that. I would recommend we go down the savings route and deal with it once we get there. But that's, that's Daryl Walker's thought. Yes, ma'am.
So if we're looking at the stadium, and the cost, I believe, is going to be six point five million, is that correct, to build it?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, and so if we were to identify three millions, three point five, or whatever, from us, and we're looking at a private-public partnership, do we have to have all of the funds? I mean, there's something in the MOU about that.
Yeah.
But I think that would be really difficult, because I think that what, what we need, we definitely need a stake in the game. You know, the, the school system does. And I, I do believe that there are a lot of private individuals that would contribute once we do have a stake in it. But could we not take what the school can offer us and go ahead and get started on some of it? And then just add to it? Can we amend that MOU for that?
There is a current MOU in place that goes back to the language that you mentioned, and that all the money has to be in an account prior to construction starting. Obviously, the board, I guess, Dion would have the option to, to amend that if you, if you chose to. And to know the history, there is a history there of why that was put in there, due to something at, at the auditorium back many years ago.
Reynolds Auditorium.
But, but that was the kind of the reason it was implemented the first time, just to protect the district, because the county ended up having to pay for the bill on that. And so, I, I, you know, we're in different times, it's different people. It's really board's decision if you want to amend that. I think it's a discussion that you can have with Dion.
And the auditorium is a part of the public school system, right? And the, the contribution by private citizens was four million? My understanding of that was that the project kept going up in price. And then the private group got to a point where they couldn't raise anymore, because they had already raised the original amount, and then an additional amount, and then it came back again that the price had gone up. I think the issue with what Ms. Kaplan brought up with, brought up is that if you don't have a date, you have a moving target also for a price. This, this stadium was priced out, you know, seven years ago at four million. So to keep, to say that they have, to say that the private group has to raise the amount, it's a moving target until you have, I mean, most, most bids right now are good for, what, thirty days?
Yes.
You know, they're not good for seven years.
Yeah.
So that's, that's an issue too. And then looking at the, you know, what's going on with Wiley Gym right now, you also want to be efficient in how that's going to happen when that construction project is finished, and they're backing out of there, how are you leaving that space? You know, it's in our next presentation as a, as a, you know, a place to practice. You know, if you go ahead and outfit it now with that underwater storage, or the under, underground water retention system, yeah, there's things that make sense economically to do if you have the funds, to do now as the funds are available than to wait until they're all in.
And, and a safety issue as well. I mean, so go ahead and get that done.
So, so a couple of questions. So this proposal, this is the same one we talked about a couple of months ago, where to split the money. So I think, I, I will just say that, to me, the difference between it being funded by a private group in, in total and us putting some money in, in it, is then, to me, I need to, I would have additional questions about the cost, right? So I think it's one thing, if somebody's saying, we will pay for this, then they kind of show the responsibility of, you know, paying for it. And if they want to do it in the way that they want to do it, they get to pay for it. But when we contribute to that, I have some additional questions, because even, and, and, and not to, to, to put Colin on the spot, but I would want to ask Colin questions around the design, you know, like the, the sort of feasibility, why, you know, my understanding is that having to put the stormwater thing in, in that space is, is a huge expense in and of itself, and that if you were, if there was an additional place to put it, we could actually have a larger stadium and around the same price. It's just is that the, the stormwater, the stormwater thing, I don't know what the thing is called, but the stormwater thing is so expensive, that raises the cost. Then on top of that, it's a smaller stadium because it has to fit in that spot. I just would have additional questions before I would support any allocation towards the stadium.
We did approve the construction plans as a, as a body.
Right.
At the district in 2018. And so, we have been involved in that review process quite, quite a bit. You are correct, the, the retention pond would be under the field. That's not unusual for us. There's a retention pond under the parking lot at the Career Center. It was expensive, so you've been on the board, know it was about two million dollars, put that stormwater pond underneath that parking lot. But in the, if you're, when you're in the city, every project you're going to do is going to be a stormwater pond under something. So, more than likely. So, but, but yes, you know, and quite honest, we've had some of those discussions about, does it make sense to do some of that jointly while you're doing Wiley and tie into, you know, our stormwater plan along with that? So, but there are, there are a lot of, there are a lot of questions, obviously, but.
And then the other piece is that, you know, I, when, because this has been something that has been discussed probably since this was like soaring in in 2018, you know, when I first got on the board, a month or two after, I asked Dion if she could pull the information from this, back, back to 1986, when the board first got a group together to study, you know, the, the sort of, it was really the equivalent of sort of what we're about to do, but a firm did it. A firm is going to do it for us, but a group of community members did it back then, where they looked across the entire district to see what the needs are, and then made recommendations to the board. And the recommendations of that group at the time were to build Deacon Thompson for Reynolds and, and Parkland and Sheridan. And of course, now that's not the desire. But I think, you know, looking at that, they're obviously, you know, going back to when these conversations first happened, there were some, there have been some shifts in what originally was proposed and versus like what the expectation is now. I think that one of the other pieces that I would like to have is just to, at some point publicly, to sort of walk, so that for the public's record, to kind of walk us through where we, where we were and sort of how we got to where we are now. Because I think to people who are looking at it, they're saying, you know, if you said, if this was the arrangement prior, I know that there are economic implications, but sort of, how have we gone from, first you said you would do this, and now, you know, you want the district to contribute to certain amount?
It's an interesting history. It goes from 1923, they actually played football on the baseball field, where the baseball field, to 1984 was their first discussion, to a building of Deacon Thompson, 1989, and here we are today. So just a really quick snapshot of what that history looks like, a lot of conversations in between there. But they did play in the park in 1923 across the baseball field, right? And so, things have changed, and, you know, I mean, there's, there's a lot that's changed. I mean, the school has changed, community's changed, there's a lot of, there's a lot of changes that have taken place, but.
And it's similar to the Walkertown situation, in that the parent group from Reynolds came to the board in 2012 to ask for funding for it, and the answer was, there, there's no funding, and there's not even a bond in sight. So the parents asked, could we try to raise money toward it? And that's what they were given permission to do, was to try to raise money themselves. And that's, that's what it is. And the board came back and with an agreement saying, if you're going to raise money for this, you also need to raise money for a practice field on campus and the Wiley Middle School Gymnasium. So the total price tag was about, at that time, twelve million dollars to, to ask parents to raise all that. And I'm just going to keep everybody remembering, they're public schools, okay? Wiley is a Title I school, and Reynolds is a majority black and brown school. So to expect parents to pay for instructional space, or what is standard at other schools, was kind of crazy. But, so that, that's where, and that.
So I, I would just like to say, I was on the board at that time, and I experienced that quite differently than how you're presenting it. I sat on the board at that time, and a group of people, not parents, some parents, often community members, came saying, we want to fund this, we want permission to place it there. In order to do that, we will build the Wiley Gym, we will do practice fields, we will raise the money. That's how it was presented to the board that I sat on, and that's what the board approved. They were never asked to fund it, they were never asked to put it on a bond. They were told that we can raise this money, and we will, and are you willing to let us put it there? That was the original agreement. There was a great deal of pushback from people in the neighborhood. There was a lot of consternation around it at that point, even with the idea of we're going to fund it all. From my point of view, being on the board, what has been asked of the board has changed over time and as if it had never been the prior agreement. Part of my great frustration is that the district took on the Wiley Gym, which they had promised to do, and that I have still never heard from anybody saying, hey, thanks, guys, for doing that. You did it. You took something on that we said we would do. My experience has been quite different, having sat on the board, having sat through a lot of these meetings, having met individually with people. And at this point, I just think it is important to get the facts straight, to get if we review exactly what motions were made at meetings, if we review the minutes, rather than saying, that's what, I sat here and what happened was not a request for bond money. What happened was, we can raise the money, we're going to do this. And then it turned out raising the money was harder than they thought.
Yeah, I think there were definitely good intentions on, on both sides. But I think if you look past the history and look to the future, you really need to look at what's the right thing to do for children. And that's really what this comes down to. What is the right thing to do for children for access to equitable facilities and the same student experience that other children get at other schools? And that's, that's the bottom line. We do, we need to do the right thing by children, by our students.
So I've had my hand raised for quite a while. Um, I think we've gone off the rails here. We are supposed to be talking about doing a facilities overview for everything, and then we're going to talk about a Haynes Park, you know, update. But we have now focused on one school, and I'm sure a lot of parents out there are wondering, how did this conversation go from talking about all schools and doing a facility update to talking about one single school with no headway, there's nothing on the agenda about one single school in that purpose? So I'm kind of wondering why we're getting in circles and running off the rails instead of focusing on all schools and all students.
So I, I, so I, I brought that up, and I said, it's kind of the elephant in the room, because, you, I mean, we can't, we, we don't need to lie to ourselves to say that we know that there are lots of conversations that happen around when this, when this was brought up, that we were going to do a facilities assessment. Why do we have to do an assessment when we already know that there are certain needs? And the conversations have been going on, as, as Daryl had said, around, you know, is there money, is there savings there that can be put toward that? So, you know, I think that it's, I mean, for me, when I was sitting here tonight, and I'm processing, you know, through the whole thing about understanding the, the need for the assessment, how are we going to fund these things once we know that? And then also, you know, tonight, we were talking about Walkertown in that same timeframe of 2012. It kind of lines up with this, with this. And we said, you know, the district wasn't doing anything that they, they didn't have textbooks. They were trying to hold on to people. We were in, you know, it was, I, I think Ms. Monson or Ms. Parker did a great job of talking about some of the things that the district had to do. But I also don't think that it is, that it's beneficial to the district to keep on, to keep acting like this, this, this isn't there. And that there, that this doesn't come up every time we start to look at, you know, spending money on something. And then it, it kind of becomes that swirling issue, that, that it's, that it's there, but we just don't talk about it. And, and I don't think through our board training and all the things that we're doing, I don't think that that benefits us as a board. It doesn't help our working relationships. We become distracting to our staff, and they have plenty of other things to do, because they're having to answer our calls. So I really think at, at some point, we need to decide, and, and we're talking about this, to answer your question, Ms. Braemer, because I, I think it's the right thing for us to talk about and put it out there. And, and to either say, we can, we can do this, and we can, we can give some funding and, or whatever, or we can't. And then, or we can't right now. I think we owe that to, to the, to the, to the parents who, who offered in good faith, or community members who offered in good faith, that they said they were going to do this. Like, we have a lot of other things that are built in our district, maybe not to this, to this level. But, I mean, I know people who have helped build softball fields and baseball fields, and we just said a parent gave us a track at Mount Tabor. I mean, you know, people want to help, but if, I think we just have to be honest. And it's time to be honest and transparent. And, and I, I bring that up is that if we, if we're going to wait for this assessment to see what all the needs are, that, that's one thing. But I think also, we, we just need to say what we're going to do. And, and I think now is kind of a time to put, to put that out there, because it really does start to, it, it, it kind of comes up, and then it derails conversations, and it's not productive. And, and everybody has opinions about that, but I, I do think we owe it to, to just put it on the table and be transparent about it. Whether that's tonight, whether that's one of those special briefings that we need to have, where we talk about, you know, the history back from, I don't know, when they played football, and, you know. I, I don't know that we, that we need to do all that, but if we do, then I say we do that, you know, sooner than later. Just because you're, you're going to get a, a report back, but that report's probably, it's going to tell us a lot of things that we don't know, but this one particular thing we do know. So I, I just, I'm just trying to put it out there, and again, to be honest, because if we, if we don't talk about this kind of in conjunction with this RFP, I don't think we're being completely transparent.
Well, then we should actually make it an agenda item, so that, for, have full transparency, so that the, that the public and the people in the public can actually make comments.
Right, well, the RFP's not up for action tonight.
Well, and again, it seems to me premature to say, we're going to make a decision about the results of the RFP that we haven't yet gotten.
Exactly.
Well, I think Mr. Walker gave us some, a good, good food for thought, that, you know, what's been spent in other places or whatever, and I think we can think about that as well as what we might find out in, in all of that. I mean, I think, you know, so, I mean, I think we've been given some good, good history, some good information, some things to think about, so.
Ms. Woodbear?
Thank you. Two points, I think, I think Elizabeth raises a, a great point around a session that can provide the board, you know, some context and more information to be empowered to make decisions around, apparently, you know, a, an issue that the board has more questions and more questions about. And I, and to Elizabeth's point, again, about, you know, a deep dive kind of meeting, where the superintendent and staff come in and present us with all of the information, not up under the sun, but with enough information that we can, you know, just focus on that one thing, and to, and to, you know, the, the Chair of Buildings and Grounds, you know, perspective around, let's just focus, get it on the table, be transparent, and then try to make decisions based on information that has been provided. And I would just ask that this committee figure out kind of what that looks like around a special call meeting, or whatever that looks like, to kind of help us to move forward. And then the second point is, I think that about a year and a half ago, I actually provided every board member an executive summary copy of that, of the Gifford County Schools Facilities Report. Yes. So I think maybe if we could round those, we might have. Okay, you do, yeah. Yes. So I think maybe if we could round those, we might have. Okay, you do, yeah.
They identified the billion dollars' worth of maintenance repairs need.
Yeah. And I can recall even the priorities of the actual items around, you know, you need to do this within three years, or it's going to cost you this much more. And so it was very-
Right. It was great. So let's ask, you know, and I think, I mean, I think it's important to put that out there. I don't think, you know, I don't know about you, but sometimes it's just like a little sigh of relief. We just need to talk about what we really do need to talk about. I think that the RFP, if we can get a sample, what I'm hearing, or it looks like from body language, is that we're looking at doing the entire district and not just, you know, one segment, right? We want the whole thing. And then there would be some conversation around how do we pay for that? I think, could we look at the ester dollars? Do we need, is that something we need to take out of fund balance? What, you know, I don't know, those one-time expenditures that we can find out about that. And then what I'm hearing Ms. Woodbury said was, "Committee figure out what that looks like around conversation." I'm thinking Ms. Mottzinger wants that, once we have the assessment back.
Yeah, I think that making a decision about what's the most critical need before you get the study on what are the most critical needs doesn't make a great deal of sense to me. So if we're putting close to a million dollars into doing a real review of the system to find out what are the most glaring and important issues, then we should wait and find out what that information actually tells us, and then make a decision. But I think, you know, to me, don't make a decision before you ask the question and then say, "Let's ask the question."
Well, and I agree with that when it comes to certain, I mean, I think we can all agree that there's no stadium sitting there on campus.
No, there is, right. But what I'm saying is that we have not gotten the full picture of what the district needs, and it is obvious, and this keeps being presented as an equity issue. We do not know what this report is going to show us. If we knew what it was going to show us, then we should certainly not spend a million dollars to find out. So to me, if I'm spending money to get information, I want to know that the information I'm getting is worth having, and that it will change how I look at things and how I make decisions. So to me, the big issue the board has is if they want to go forward with this RFP to get information, it's because they actually want to know what the answer is, and then make decisions based on that. So that's my own feeling. Don't spend money asking questions that you don't want the answer to.
I think for me, we've talked about this for a long, long time, and I'm not talking about the stadium right now. And when I say that, I'm not talking about the stadium in what I'm getting ready to say. I think that it's a shame that we don't know until something happens and a roof falls in, or something else happens that's something that needs to be immediately fixed. Some way, we got to look at the whole picture, and this has nothing to do with the stadium. We got to look at the whole picture as to where we are and what we're going to need monies for. And we're not doing that. I mean, it seems like I hear things here when things happen. Such and such is broke. So-and-so. You know, the air conditions are falling apart, blah, blah, blah. But I don't hear it until it happens and it becomes a crisis. I want something so that we know ahead of time. It's like your car. You eventually know when your old piece of jalopy has had it. And we're not doing that. And I don't understand why we're not doing that in these schools. I think it's one of the most important things.
We do that. I think our operations department does a lot of that with that five-year thing that they have to do to turn in. I mean, I think this assessment is crucial for informing the next bond. But I think that there are some things, I mean, when you're comparing, you know, types of flooring in certain rooms, I understand that, but there's, it's different when there's a complete absence of a facility, and it's a safety issue, and it's an equity issue. And I think unless you've lived it, you don't understand the urgency there is there, and what it's doing to the student experience.
Well, I'm not talking, this has nothing to do with, you know, because, you know, I was for the stadium, and I've been for the stadium.
Was?
I have been for the stadium, Leah. Been for the stadium. I still am for the stadium. Did you get that?
Thank you.
Okay. But, you know, I want to know also about what these other schools need in the future. That's what I'm asking. Don't just wait until the bomb drops and everybody starts running. I want to know ahead of time to prepare myself as to where we are and what these schools need. And that's all schools. That is all schools.
Ms. Bramer?
You mentioned you have to live it. I am from RJR, and my parents graduated from RJR. And we've lived it, and we survived it just fine. So what I'm saying is, we need to look at the, it may come back that we need this facility as a whole. But we need to study it to know that we do. And this is what we have the opportunity to do, and we need to take the opportunity. And then if it comes out that we really need this, then we pay for it.
Madam Chair, I just, so just to kind of sort of wrap, hopefully wrap this conversation up. For me, it is, obviously, because I think since I was a spectator, the stadium has been a point of contention for this board. And I think that it's less about, I don't know if what I've heard is from my colleagues is ever, is whether or not Reynolds needs a stadium. I don't think anybody has been like, "No, we don't want a stadium for Reynolds," right? I think that it's about the how we get there, and it's also about the fact that for me, when we talk about equity issues, I can understand when we think about a stadium, and we think about football, and we think about revenue in high schools, it can be something that is pushed to the forefront because it's what's popular. But I'm here to tell you that for me, as a person who, when I was in high school, did not play football or play sports in high school, and was engaged in the arts, that equitable access to all facilities and all kinds of facilities is important, right? And because we right now exist in a system where, you know, there are schools where children are expected to go to dance class in a converted classroom where they've laid down some kind of floor that you could potentially get a splinter in your foot in if you take your shoes off. And then, you know, there are lots of other examples across this district. I think that it, to me, is a little insulting to sort of, at this point, at this juncture, prioritize any project sort of over that work, because what that says as a board for us is to say, "Okay, we are actively prioritizing a project that although has been sort of a part of a public debate, still, we have then placed it above all of our other needs." And so I think that for me, what I would like to see is for us to move forward with this RFP, and then as that work comes in, take a holistic view of our needs, and then make adjustments and decisions as we need to.
Thank you. And Alex is a member of the Building and Grounds Committee. So one question, Daryl, if we put the scope together and we take it out for bid, about what time would this assessment start? In a, I mean, I know you don't know exactly, but...
Yeah, I would think we probably have a 30-day window through an RFP, just 45, 60-day window RFP process. And then, as I mentioned, the people I've talked to have done this work, simply somewhere in a six-to-nine-month process to come back with a full report. So you could be looking at January, February.
Okay.
I think the other thing this will tell us is where we do have some great facilities. I mean, I'm thinking back to Mineral Springs being a magnet school, and some of the things they have over there that we could really accentuate, in that we could publicize and make, you know, really, I mean, kind of spotlight as well, because we do have some schools that have some really wonderful attributes that we probably are underutilizing. And I assume that this will show us some of those as well, Daryl.
It should, yes, ma'am.
And that's a great point.
Just three quick comments. So, Daryl, can you quickly, so we are somehow in the last bond, we did a facilities audit ourselves to determine what would be on that bond. Somehow, we do a report as well that we submit to the state regular. Can you just really quickly tell what will be different about this audit? How much deeper will it go than what we already do to make decisions about what we're going to fix and win? That's the first thing.
Yeah, good point. You may recall, to those on the board, when we did the 2016 bond, we came to you with $690 million with the needs, and you had to make a decision with $350. And so you already know, starting right now today, without our audit or going through an RFP process, you're going to be looking at $300,000 or $400,000 coming back at you right now today. What will probably come out of it that we don't necessarily have great detail is just some inventory-type items. You know, between our 10-year plan and the five-year plan that we do for the state, and the projects that were not in the last bond, we have a pretty good idea. You know, the things that we need to address that will come back will be, it may be, you've got the same issue with Salem Prep, you've got a football team and no stadium. That'll come back. You've got middle school sports. You don't have softball and baseball fields. You've got some issues in some of our gyms with some of our bleachers, and, you know, we've made them all 88 accessible now. You're going to get some of that kind of information. But the kind of guts of the building, we know that. We kind of know what that is, quite honestly. And, but it will, my guess is, it would give you a better feel from a third party to say, to validate what we have said as a staff, probably. And maybe there's a way to do that and not spend a million dollars.
Yeah. I'm thinking we go to the lowest bidder, and it's not a million. No, anyway. So can we bring then, Daryl, in the timeline of the next meetings in three weeks, do we already, I know you were already working on a potential, just to be prepared, a potential RFP with, I think, working with Dion on something that could go out. What is our next step with the board to move forward?
I think we have to decide on scope of work. You know, what do you want to come out of this assessment? Obviously, you've got the executive summary from Guilford's, if you want something similar to that, or if you want to add to that. I mean, we've got to decide, what do you really want in the RFP as a scope of work for whoever we send this out to? Because their price is going to be based off of what that work road looks like, right? So we kind of need to understand that area, and we can come back and have that conversation in a couple, a few weeks.
And I would just say, those are excellent points, and thank you, Superintendent McManus. I think it's hard for us, for me, that's not, you know, I've put together those audits all the time, so that scope of work without kind of referencing some examples and that sort of thing to us ahead of time so we can read and process, it's probably hard for us to sit here. And I think we've given you overall, hopefully enough that could help. And so to expedite that along, if those are, you know, samples, something that can be emailed to us, and then if we have, you know, comments, we can direct it back to just Dion or to Daryl or, you know, one person, maybe that will help with the, you know, with the ongoing process.
And, Daryl, the 2016 bond, wasn't the Reynolds Stadium on there because there was a need for it, and then it got scratched out?
There was $3 million in the original list of the 696, as well as North Forsyth and Deaton Thompson as well, just to be totally honest. It was Mount Tabor, Glen, North, excuse me, Deaton Thompson and Reynolds.
Yep. And fixing assets, the stadiums was prioritized over any type of equity initiative or equality initiative of making sure that every school had one on campus.
What, sorry, I lost my concentration there. What really, the deciding factor really boiled down to those two were structural issues at Mount Tabor and Glen, where we had, we had been spending a couple hundred thousand a year just kind of shoring it up, what we call shoring it up. And we engineered, came back and said, "By this date, 2018, 19, whatever it was, you're going to lose those stadiums and shut them down." So that was why you saw those two projects that Colan did come out of the chute first, because structurally. Deaton Thompson, 2025 is the magic number. If something's not done by 2025, you're going to close Deaton Thompson. It's kind of in that same boat. So structural safety issues came into play as the evaluation tool.
And we weren't really evaluating things through an equity lens at that point.
No, ma'am. It was a safety issue.
But that's what our focus is now, through an equity lens, right? And I have to just say that when we talk about, all of a sudden, we're prioritizing this issue, we're really not, because we've actually done the opposite. We've not talked about this, and we have not made this something that is very valuable and very important for the student experience. And I can speak to the fact that I've had five kids graduate through Reynolds, and yes, my kids had cars. They were able to go to these practices. They were able to put these on their college resumes, and I'm sure it made a difference in their acceptance into schools. But we have so many children now, and the majority, black and brown, at Reynolds, that do not have this opportunity. And I just think that we owe it to our children to not kick this can down the road anymore. I think we need to talk about it. We need to have possibly, you know, a meeting to do a deep dive, just so that all the board members will understand that this is an equity issue. And perhaps for board members who haven't toured the school, you know, they need to, or look at a yearbook and really see what is Reynolds. It's not that rich school on the hill. Maybe it was 40 years ago, but it's not that way today. And we have got to address this. I mean, we just can't not talk about it anymore.
So, again, I think we have all agreed that we will have a deep dive. I think we've also all agreed that if we're going to put out an RFP, that we are going to actually get the information before we decide what the most critical needs in the district are. I promise you, as far as football scholarships go, those are so few and far between as to be irrelevant. I think that football is an experience, but so is dance, and so are the arts.
Absolutely.
And so are many of our schools do not have any acts, don't have anything close to what Reynolds has. So we can talk about equity, but please, let's do it at a time where we have set aside the time to really deep dive in this, but also to agree that if we are going to put out an RFP for information, we're actually asking a real question, and that we are not answering the question before we put out, before we put it out. So I hear that some board members feel that the most single biggest equity issue in our district is about this auditorium, the stadium. But I'd really like us to please, please, we said we would put out an RFP. I think there was a fairly unanimous feeling amongst the board, let's see what the scope is. And I think Mr. Bahannon made a good comment. I thought we had come to a point where it was, we will visit this. We agree it needs to be visited, but tonight now, it's time to put it to rest. We still have more than half of our agenda left. It's 8:30, and I want us to have a reasoned conversation about this. But this is not the time or place to do more of it.
It's always the right time to do the right thing by children.
So I think, I think not only the committee members, but the whole board for, you know, engaging in conversation. And I know that there's a lot of passion around this, and so I know I also sense frustration. But that's what we do, right? And so, you know, thank you guys for talking about it. And I also don't think we can keep it in the shadows, and I think we'll figure out the appropriate place and what we need to do moving forward. So, Daryl, you have one more topic, and that's the Haynes Park update.
Yes, ma'am. I'll be really quick with this. We had, Ms. McManus and myself had a really good, I think, a really positive conversation yesterday with the city manager, Lee Garrity, Assistant City Manager, Damon DeCane, Department of Rec. Director, Leslie Alexander, joined us on the call. You do not see Lisa Bodenheimer on here, but I did go talk to her today to make sure that she felt like, to know that Wiley is very much part of this conversation. We, I think we had a really good conversation. You can see in front of you, we have kind of split the park up into four zones of the use for Wiley and RJR. We have provided, well, as you can see, Zone 1 is the baseball field. Zone 2 is the kind of track area that we've had some discussion around. Zone 3 is an open area. Zone 3 is an open area, and Zone 4 is a softball field. I will let you know, Zone 4, we will be bringing back to you at the next meeting, a maintenance agreement. We will be installing lights there, and that will help support softball team, but also give us another location to practice after hours. We have some challenges in the spring, when the daylight saving time has not changed, especially, you know, in that really early, about four or five weeks there, that'll help with that. Kevin, I think there's another slide with a schedule on it, like an Excel spreadsheet. Do you see that? Apologize. So, this is the RJR schedule for practice for all the teams for next year. This has been turned into the city Winston-Salem, so they are moving forward with solidifying the space that we are asking for. You will see mainly from the high school side, you see 4 o'clock. It will likely go from about 2:15 to 7 o'clock, including Wiley. So, you will see the Wiley schedule come back. AD is, John and Alexis McCoy are working with the middle school AD to get their schedule together. You will see it come back. So, one of the discussions we had is about managing this space when kids are out there. A lot of conversation about this yesterday. The city has agreed to put up new signage. Signage out there now is inadequate. They have promised to print new signage and put it out there, basically, from about 2:00 to 7:00 p.m., depending on the sport and the season, right? So, not everybody's going to be out here at one time, but most of the fields will be used, or there'll be some rotation going on. So, we had a great conversation about that. I will let you know, we brought up the fact they had a park ranger. We did learn yesterday that only two park rangers in the whole city for eight parks, and so that person is not always in the park. And so, we felt like signage is really important. And then, they talked about their marketing people at the city having a communication plan to the community around the park about what our schedules are for student athletes. And so, you should see that roll out from the city, not necessarily from the district, but from the city related to that. Since they own the park, we felt like they needed to communicate that message, and we felt like that was a deciding factor yesterday when we had that conversation. There's also a discussion around mowing, that some of our coaches and booster clubs are having to pay. We did agree that we needed to continue to mow the baseball field, because it is a special type, obviously, grass, and probably softball field will be seasonal, and what we need to mow, but the rest of the park, the city's going to take over. And it will be up to the school and the AD to work with Parks and Rec on their scheduling here through these periods that you see on the schedule, when they need areas mowed in a particular manner, so that that can be addressed. And that will help, I think, workload a little bit with our coaches. We did discuss about if we wanted to do upfits and projects within the park. We are currently looking at potentially replacing the fence at the baseball field that's kind of been there for a really long time. And so, basically, what they've asked us to do is prepare that list and give it to the city to review it. I think, I think how it's been handled, quite honestly, in the most recent past is caused some issues, the wrong people making the decision, quite honestly. And so, I think we've worked through that process. That will now go to Parks and Rec to work with us. We're also looking at replacing or putting on a new overhead to the batting cages and putting in another cage at the baseball field for baseball, and then looking at one for softball. The restrooms, Tricia brought up a great point, during baseball games, softball games, there is nowhere for students or people to go to the restroom. The city did agree to open the restrooms that are within the track area for use, and that they would be responsible for maintaining and cleaning those. We would check those after games, just to make sure there was no vandalism or issues that were caused during that event, but they did agree to open those up during events. We did have some discussion about the tennis court within the track, and what really came out of that was the fact that what it was going to require is a new stormwater retention pond, if they moved it. And so, I can understand that as, if it was moved. I do not think, at least at this point, that will change, quite honestly, even though they did, we did discuss the fact that there was a design done around that. But the fear of probably losing some space in the park, if there's some stormwater retention pond, was a concern. So, right now, I do not think that is on the table. I wouldn't say it's off the table forever and ever, amen, but right now, I think it is a discussion point for another time. We are installing lights on the softball field, as I mentioned, and we are looking at some improvements in the park to support the student athletes at this time. So, that was just a really quick summary. I do think, and Ms. McManus may add to this, but it really was a positive conversation, and an upbeat conversation, and a supportive conversation.
One question about Zone 3 on the map?
Yes, ma'am.
What exactly is that? Because there's not a field there.
There's just, there's just a green grass area right there.
Okay, but there's no lights, there's no irrigation?
No, ma'am.
It's not a standard-sized field, right?
No, ma'am. No, it is just a green grass space, correct?
Green grass space.
Yes, ma'am. And I can't remember...
And how about with Zone 4 with drainage?
Zone 3, he's looking at JV lacrosse as a potential there.
Right. Wiley soccer, I think, was mentioned there.
Yeah, so, but it does get, this schedule here has all of our RJR teams except 2, and that is boys and girls varsity lacrosse. And those 2, right now, will have to currently travel off campus. And I'm hoping that maybe the softball lights will help eventually, maybe there's some space in the outfield when the team is playing somewhere else that can be utilized for lacrosse. So, there may be here on Monday, there on Tuesday, but I'm hoping there'll be some opportunity they can stay in the park.
As far, as far as the tennis courts, you know, they usually have a lot of events there, and the kids pay monies to be able to come to the qualifier, because they rank them from North Carolina, you know, where they're going to be in North Carolina. Or the Southerns, which they rank, that, right now, I've got one that's in Georgia right now on that. But it was usually, usually the Haynes that the kids would come to and play, and that's been going on for years and years and years. And, you know, they would pay a qualified event, and it brought a whole lot into our city by people coming from North Carolina or coming from different areas, grandparents, to see these kids be able to play. And now, these courts are terrible, and you can't even go out there and bounce a ball, you know, on the courts. Are they definitely going to have these courts ready? Because I think our city is missing out on a lot of events because of the courts not even be playable.
Yeah, it's part of their RFP for the park project in this next round. So, that is the game plan to outfit. Reynolds did not use those courts this year. They went to Miller Park because of that. And so, they did say that that is a promise, hopefully, right? That they said that that's what they were, as part of their bond project, it's in this RFP, is to repair those tennis courts.
And when you talk about the underwater storage piece, are you saying that if they move, if they get rid of the tennis courts and the building inside the track, they now have to put in an underwater storing, even though there's more ground surface there?
Well, you're basically trading grounds, you're trading ground up.
Only if you rebuild them, so...
Only if you rebuild them, because the code's different now, obviously, when they built those. So, the stormwater regulations, stormwater regulations are going to require them to put a retention pond.
So, what, did they entertain putting the bathrooms, you know, some, well, there will be bathrooms in the concession stand of the Reynolds Stadium, those would be bathrooms, and then being less, the, I think it's six courts in there now, four, six courts? Was that considered? Is if they take all that structure out, then it would be a field there? And that would need an underground storage?
I think, I think if that opportunity comes around to have that conversation around the restroom side, then I think we could, I think it would be appropriate to have that conversation.
Okay, and I still haven't seen a plan for what they're, what they're doing in there, because I've heard they're putting trees in the horseshoe part, I've heard they're, I just haven't, I haven't seen a plan. I just want to make sure it does work. I mean, part of that agreement says that they won't do any improvements that interfere with our programming, and that they're supposed to have their plan reviewed by our board, and I haven't seen anything.
Yeah, it's a lot, it's really kind of cosmetic, other than the court piece of what they're doing in this bond. I'll bring that to the next meeting then.
Thank you.
Ma'am Chair, that's all I have. I do, we'll leave you with, you know, we've had some discussion around our maintenance facility at the Lansing Lot. That land did close today and sell, and so, we will have, the clock was ticking, we have two years, two years as of this date to be out, and so, you'll start seeing some movement around that. We'll kick in our fueling agreement with the county. We'll start next week, they'll be pulling those underground storage tanks out, and so, we will start moving in a different direction here soon. So, just leave you with that. Thank you for your time and patience with us today.
Thank you, Daryl, and again, thank you, Board, for a good conversation around some issues that we need to talk about. So, we have one action item this evening, and that is to consider approval of exploration of the cell tower lease proposal.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Wonderful. Thank you so much. That concludes, and Ms. Parker will lead the curriculum committee.
Chair Parker, I was wondering if we wanted to take a five-minute bathroom break before...
I think that's probably enough, I think.
Thank you.
Sorry, CTE people.
I thought he was with you.
No.
Jack.
Tommy?
Go get him.
Don't stop. Keep playing. Here we go. Here's the fun part.
Did you do this?
Great job.
Encouragement. Pass it on. A message from the Foundation for a Better Life.
If I could reach the stars, pull one down for you. Shine it on my heart, so you could see the truth. I could change the world. I would be the sunlight in your universe. You would think my love was really something good. Baby, if I could change the world. Baby, if I could change the world.
Make a difference. Pass it on. A message from the Foundation for a Better Life.
Baby, tell me where'd you ever learn to fight without saying a word? Then walks back into my life like it's all gonna be alright. Don't you know how much it hurts? When we don't talk, when we don't touch, when it doesn't feel like we're even in love? It matters to me. When I don't know what to say, don't know what to do, don't know if it really even matters to you? How can I make you see? It matters to me. When I don't know what to say, don't know what to do, don't know if it really even matters to you? How can I make you see? It matters to me.
But they are very cool. I don't know. But that is a lot of, it's just under the ground. So right. I'm not sure it was very funny. I don't know. I know. I know. I know. It's like a thought. I called it out. It was 25. Alex called it away. I'm like, it's still fun. And that got me though. I didn't have cars. I didn't have a car. I like talking. I'm like, we have like soccer practice. Our coach did not compete in the world. Our coach said, "Practice your soccer with it." At least now our backyard area is a little bit too many guys. And he's like, "No rocks. If you uphill, no rocks. Everyone rocks." And we ran two miles. And it was practice for an hour. And then we ran two miles back. And they have no, no standing, no something. I didn't even see nothing. At which point, I mean, we were soft. So we drove along with Bobby. And we drove all the time, and I took two. And I landed with Bobby. So I took the bus. I lost the bus.
We're going to resume the meeting in about 30 seconds.
We're going to resume the meeting in about 30 seconds.
All right. We'll go ahead with the curriculum committee. I'm sorry. I scared you. We'll go ahead with the curriculum committee. And I will remind the members of this committee or myself, Ms. Crowley, Ms. Kaplan, Ms. Mott Singer, and Mr. Bohuman. So, our first discussion item, if they're still awake, would be, would be Bruce Sherman and our CTE folks. We're going to bring to us the local application. Thank you for your patience.
No problem. Thank you, Ms. Parker and Board members. It's delightful to be here tonight. You know, last year, I'm thinking, sitting back there thinking, last year I had to do this on whatever it was, Teams or Zoom or something. I just remember, we weren't here. So I'm so happy to be back in face, face-to-face meetings again. It's great. Looking forward to more of this going on as we move forward. I will, I promise you, I've only got three slides tonight because that was our limit. So, I don't know what Daryl's message was, but ours was three slides and make it fast. So, I'm gonna do my best to speed this along. So, I wanted to bring back to your attention that last year, because it seems like five or six years ago, last year, our local application changed from previous to a two-year application. So this is the second year of a two-year application, and so there's not a whole lot new. So I really wanted to just highlight a few things to remind you all, because it has been a while since we've seen each other, and to kind of give you a few quick updates on the programs as they are today. So, what would happen without a pandemic would have been, we would have received data this year from last year's performance, and we would have rewritten some of our strategies that were in our plan. None of that took place because we didn't have testing last year, so we didn't have any data. So things are pretty much ongoing as we cited them in the first year of the two-year application. So, as we get some data, because we did have some testing this year, as we get data during next school year, we'll be able to make some adjustments as we go through the year, but basically, things are as they were last year when we put the plan together in the first place. Before I move on though, let me do, let me say this. Next year, in the fall, we will begin the process for the next two-year plan, which involves now a comprehensive local needs assessment, where we have a like 40-page document that we break up and we meet with our parents, our administrators, our teachers, our business community, whom am I leaving out, Vicky? But there's groups that have to input on that local needs assessment, and that's what we use as the basis of part of the local application for the next two years, for the 22 to 24 school years. Performance standards, I mentioned when I talked about this last year, our performance standards did change a little bit in CTE. One of the areas that has been, an area that you all have helped us a lot with is credentials. And I do want to mention that we have 32 courses now of our 60-some that we offer. We have 32 courses that have a credential as what's known now as the proof of learning. Their 100-item multiple choice tests are gone for end-of-course. They now sit for an industry-recognized credential in 32 of our courses. Those were picked because the credential covered at least 80% of the course content. We have other credentials that students earn in other courses, but those, 32 in particular, that is now kind of their end-of-course test, and it is a, a little bit of a struggle, as you might imagine. Pharmacy technicians, for instance, that's a pretty difficult exam. We know about our nurses in our nursing fundamentals classes, and so I wanted to say about those classes, thank you all for your support to get those students back in school as much as we could this year, because many of them did sit for those credential tests and have passed them. So we're very proud of that group. In the Perkins Five legislation, there is a lot more emphasis, obviously, on credentials and also work-based learning. I appreciate Daryl's kind comments. We do and have had a very robust work-based learning program, including internships, some pre-apprenticeships, and some actual apprenticeships. Not only with our maintenance department do we have apprenticeships, we also have, many of our students in our masonry classes at Kennedy are involved in summer apprenticeships with McGee Brothers and Bloom Construction. And so, we're happy that those are ongoing and those students are getting, that is the most valuable training, as you can imagine, and anything that we can do to help, we have had many conversations with our maintenance department about these trade areas. Colin and I sit on a construction council at the Chamber. This is discussed every single meeting, what a shortage there is in the trades areas. So anything we can do to help with those things, that's what we definitely want to be about. So, I think that's all I need to tell you about that slide. Let me move on. Couple other things that are new in Perkins Five, teacher recruitment and retention. I think that's kind of something that we should have been paying attention to all along, and we did, but now it's a requirement. So it's part of our local application that we have a plan for recruiting and retaining good CTE teachers. So we have this year had several conversations with our HR department. We're involved now in writing job descriptions before they get posted for schools. We had a monitoring visit this year. One of the big things they talked about and cited us actually for in a few areas were licensure violations, like a teacher was teaching the course that they didn't have the correct license in. Well, there's 29 different licenses in CTE. So it's not like math or language arts or something. A lot of these courses, they have to have a particular license to teach a particular course. And so we try to help educate our HR office, and they in turn are helping our principals so that we're making sure we're making quality choices when we hire folks. And then we try to help those teachers with their initial licensing, and there's some new news coming in that front as we move ahead. Next year, the CTE at DPI is launching a new licensure program that we'll know more about this summer as they roll it out. Career development plans are, for CTE students, a requirement. I do want you to know, and as you have opportunities to talk to your legislators, there's a bill currently in the North Carolina Legislature to require all students to have a career development plan, starting at fifth grade. We feel like this will be a great help to our programs and all programs, but especially in our programs where students are trying to make choices when they get to high school, which pathway should I be going down? And a career development plan is a great way to give them some insight as to what they're good at, what they like, and how that matches up maybe with a pathway that they might want to explore in their high school years. I mentioned proofs of learning a moment ago. That was another pretty big change in our world, because we've been doing those 100-item multiple choice tests for a long time. I mean, like, I go back pretty far to the 80s, I remember we started those. So now, our proofs of learning in CTE are in three different varieties. One is still, there's some courses with 100-item multiple choice tests. There's also those 32 I mentioned that have a credential as the, proof of learning is the term they use now. And then the others, we have 13, I think it is, this year, and we're adding five or six more next year, have a performance-based measure instead of the multiple choice test. We're excited about the performance-based measures. We, we did struggle with them a little bit this year because of the first year and kids were not in school, so you can think about, if they have to perform something, it's hard to do that in a remote environment. So that gave us a bit of a challenge, but we've made it through most of those with pretty good success, and we'll get better at it as, as time goes on. The thing I want you to understand about performance-based versus the end-of-course model that we used to use, is they could be repeated. Think about your driver's license test. When you go take a driver's license test, if you don't make the score you need to, they let you come back and try it again so that you can get that driver's license. That's what we want students to show in our CTE classes, is that they can perform whatever the tasks are that they're learning in that content. So we're excited about that change in our programs, and the DPI is planning to move more courses to that in a way from the 100-item test. So we'll hear more about that as time goes on as well. Another area that our new application talks about, and we have, are pathways. And so our pathways have to be aligned with the labor market in the area. Now, it doesn't have to be just Forsyth County. It can be in the region. Things really are more regional these days. And so to that end, we have an advisory committee that is mandated by the state legislature, and on our advisory committee, we are very fortunate to have Mr. Sean Meck as our committee chairman. Sean works at Progress Rail. He's also worked with Forsyth Tech in one of their apprenticeship programs, and he's leading our advisory board through a strategic planning process that we use, that he used with Forsyth Tech, to get our advisory board members to have buy-in to the things that we need to do. And one of the things that's going to come up is, we're going to have to look at our programs, and we're going to have to decide, does this really fit the current employment needs? And if it does, great, we keep it, whatever. If it doesn't, we have to make those hard decisions when to phase those things out. And then what's the next big thing? What's the next thing that we need to be bringing into our programs? So that's part of what our advisory board, that's also part of that CLNA that I mentioned earlier, that is done. We go out beyond our advisory board to other business groups to get input on what's that next big thing, so that we can keep our eyes focused down the road a little bit. And then lastly, subgroup performance. In all of our performance standards, they're then broken down by the, I'll get the wrong acronym now, ESSA. That's right. ESSA. I want to say 8ESR. ESSA, subgroups. And so all of our data has to be broken down by those, and in our local application, we have to look at those subgroups. And let's say, I'm gonna pick this out of the sky, it's not real, but let's say Hispanics don't do well on credentials in X course, then we are required to write a standard, or write a strategy that we're going to try to improve that. And so, we have been working with Effie, and some of our performance standards line right up with the strategic plan goal, too. And so, we are trying to work hand in hand. It just really neat how that played right together, that our local application lined right up with our strategic plan in these areas, so that we're taking a hard look at our equity as well. Do we have equitable access to pathways for all students in all races and colors and genders and everything? So, just wanted you to know that that is a change, a little bit in Perkins Five, that we are now in our local application, every year, addressing subgroup performance in all of the different performance standards that we have. That's a quick snapshot of what's going on with our local application. I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have. That was real quick compared to Mr. Walker. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them for you.
Any questions for Mr. Sherman?
All right. Thank y'all for the opportunity.
Thank you, and thank you all for the job you do for CTE, because it's, it is very necessary for our community. All right. Next, we have social studies curriculum update. Courtney Tuck and Effie McMillan. Are you a part of this, Effie, or is there someone else? Okay. Well, we will let you, you ladies take over then.
Good afternoon, curriculum committee, Board members, Chair Woodbury and Superintendent McManus. Joining me today is Courtney Tuck, who has taken on extra duties within our social studies department due to the loss of our beloved Rebecca McKnight. And so tonight, we're going to be presenting updates for social studies, starting, we're going to start with our cultural infusion project. And so I wanted to start off by naming what those goals are. And so our number one goal is always to provide students with multiple perspectives of the histories and cultures that make up the community in which they live. And then secondly, we wanted to provide curriculum materials to help African-American and Hispanic students see themselves in the curriculum that they're learning. To date, one of the main concerns that we've gotten from our office, from board members, and from our community partners, lies within monitoring progress. And so we've had lots of questions that talks about, like, how do we know the lessons are actually being carried out? And so consistent progress has been made through teachers and teacher assistants with professional development that supports the actual infusion project. In addition, we have eighth-grade student work samples for each of the inquiry lessons that have been collected to ensure and support teacher delivery. We do understand that this process can be strengthened, and so we've had this conversation, I would say, starting January of this year, where we asked ourselves and our teams, how are we going to strengthen the monitoring process? And so if you look at the slide, we've outlined a couple of things that we want to embed in terms of this year. And so the first thing is, making sure that we're going to have cultural infusion item types, that we're going to embed into our unit assessments. The next thing is to create a calendar for curriculum coaches to walk through with the principals, the assistant principals of instruction, as well as the IFs. And then lastly, we want to make sure that our cultural infusion lessons are not forgotten, right? We want to make sure that within the newly revised social studies standards outlined in the North Carolina Course of Study, that we still include those lessons. Courtney and I have been discussing making a look-for tool, so that teachers, principals, assistant principals, and IFs are able to follow that, so that they will know how students learn and do history. Looking ahead, we know that NCDPI has adopted new state standards. What we know now is that NCDPI will vote on approving these K5 social studies resources. These resources include standards that are going to be unpacked. They're an unpacked document. Also, there's a glossary, and then there's also a crosswalk. And so we will see that, hopefully, June 15th, there will be a move to approve those documents and those resources, so that we will have access to them. those documents and those resources, so that we will have access to them. For six, eight, for grades six through eight, actually, six through twelve, it's not going to be brought up before the State Board until July. And so those are the current things ahead for the State Board of Education.
What's a crosswalk?
So, you want to talk about that?
The crosswalk documents take the old standards and put them side by side with the new ones, and compare so that we can look at similarities and differences.
Thank you. And so, right now, our social studies team is immersed in creating unit plan organizers for grades K through eight, for world history, for economics and personal finance, and also for civic literacy. Due to the delayed passing of the social study standards, we are looking to have at least two units completed per course, and draft our PD in order to highlight the inquiry strand before our August school start. So it's not necessarily where we want to be, but due to the delay, it's kind of where we are. Lastly, the new social study standards align with the following strands, and that's geography, economics, history, behavioral science, which is formerly known as culture, and then civics and government, as well as inquiry. The new social study standard, sorry, are specifically written to include multiple perspectives. According to our North Carolina Superintendent of Public Instruction, critical race theory and any references to it were removed from the North Carolina Revised Social Study Standards. At Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, the social studies curriculum and instructional resources are framed with standards outlined in the North Carolina Course of Study, using an inquiry model paired with primary and secondary resources to guide how students learn and do history. I want to highlight inquiry. When we're talking about the field of inquiry, or the strand of inquiry, it's a shift that's from studying to doing social studies. So inquiry provides the opportunity for students to put on lenses of a historian, of a geographer, of an economist, and of a political science, scientist, sorry, to gain and deepen their understanding of the past and the world today. And so lastly, I would like to take this opportunity to truly thank our social studies curriculum and instructional coaches, that is Courtney Tuck, that is Melissa McGready, that is Chris Schaefer, as well as Nathan Tolbert, for their time, for their work, for their passion. That's been exhibited all year, but most importantly, over the past nine weeks, to continue the work of social studies, due to our loss. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions? Yeah, Ms. Woodbury?
I don't have a question. I do have a statement as it relates to our infusion curriculum. So as many of, you know, the board took a vote to implement the infusion, and I think, when I assumed that the vote aligned with some kind of policy shift, it really didn't. And so there's really, right now, the accountability factor, to me, is something that we need to address. I think that there is, you know, the goodwill of a board vote, but how, where is it, I guess, you know, formalized? And so I think that this board needs to move forward with looking at, I think, our article, one curriculum policy, and at least add that a part of our curriculum now is this infused curriculum, and then let the superintendent create some kind of administrative component, administrative regulation around what will be taught in the infused curriculum. I would be sort of probably hesitant as a board to try to outline what would be taught. I think that lies in the purview of the superintendent, but I do think the board needs to formalize our vote into something that this community can hold us accountable.
So, a couple of things. So, well, first, to Chair Woodbury's point, I agree, but I also would say that I think there are additional ways, sort of, in addition to sort of codifying it in policy, that we sort of make the, not just the infusion curriculum, but equity as a whole, sort of a part of the district's core. So I think something, you know, as we're developing evaluation instruments for leaders in buildings and things of that nature, having a part of that, be a part of, you know, equity being a part of that, in terms of, because we always talk about, how do you hold people accountable, not just on the curricular piece, but also just across the board? So I think that that's something to think about. I'm really happy about this work. I am so very passionate about this. I actually believe that we should really look at the work of infusion across all of the areas, all of the different content areas, because I think that children should be able to see themselves, not just in social studies, but in every single facet of learning. Additionally, a sort of question I have, because as a, I am a, I am a student of critical race theory, and I, it's been unfortunate to me to see the sort of attacks on it, that have sort of been a part of a conversation recently, and so I just want to clear some things up, and Effie, so you may be the person to answer these questions, but I know in this slide, it says that Superintendent Truitt has said that all the references to critical race theory were removed, but there really weren't that many, right, to begin with, right? Critical race theory is not in of itself a course, or it's not a part of curriculum, it's a practice, and it's really not something you see in primary and secondary education. Is that correct?
That is, yeah, I'm sorry. No, go ahead. That is absolutely correct. It's not a curriculum, it's not a packaged program, so you're absolutely right.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Ms. Bramer?
Thinking about, you know, we've talked many times in the past about the African-American history class, and it being a history class. And I have often wondered, because I know we are limited by the state in so many ways, but is it possible that, you know, African-American culture and history together can be also a humanities, affecting music, affecting politics, affecting every aspect of life, science? Is it possible that we can explore an option that keeps that on the table while we still have this four-history requirement?
Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools offers African-American history as one of the electives, which a student can choose to have it as one of their four mandatory courses that they have to have to graduate. So I do think that as teachers grow in the content to teach African-American history, there can be some consideration around helping them to, you know, build capacity around the, more of the cultural components in addition to the history. For instance, at Winston-Salem State, you take African-American culture. And I know that there's a difference in African-American culture and African-American history to a degree that I've taught at Winston-Salem State and North Carolina A&amp;T, where it's African-American history, right? So I do think that, you know, we can, you know, to your point, Board Member Bramer, get with Ms. Grant to make sure that our teachers have the resources, the professional development, content experts, that can help them to bring in those more cultural components when they're teaching African-American history.
Perfect, and that's exactly what I was going to say. We're looking at that, not only just in the history, social studies area, but the selection of the novels that we select in English Language Arts, to be more representative of multiple cultures, in the music that we provide through our music, through our arts. So every one of the areas in instructional services is looking at culture through their lane, to make sure that African-American or Hispanic culture does not have to be compartmentalized to a class, but it's truly infused throughout all of our curriculum.
And Native American.
Yes, I started to say.
And Asian, and just thinking about the populations of our kids that are in our district, how do we represent all of our students and families within our district, and give a more broad perspective about differences and similarities?
Exactly.
Yes, thank you very much. So, Ms. Woodbury, to your point, do you, did you want Ms. Jenkins to explore a policy?
Yes.
Okay. So, if Ms. Jenkins can, can explore a policy, and then, of course, the AR is a different thing, but that would be an offshoot of that as well, so, okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you all very much for that report, and we'll look forward to hearing more about what the state does and what we do from a social studies standpoint, which is my favorite subject, so. All right, Ms. McMillan, are you doing middle school ELA? No. Yes, you are, yes, you are. Anne Ashley Limley is as well, so, okay.
Absolutely. So, again, good evening, Committee Chair Parker, Superintendent McManus, and Board Members. This evening, I have with me Ashla Limley, who is the Director of Advanced Learning, here to talk about and bring forth a recommendation regarding the accelerated middle school ELA course, which is currently known as ELA AIG. So we're going to tag team. There we go, perfect. So as outlined in goal two, as you know, of our district's strategic plan, the focus is on ensuring equal and equitable access to quality instruction and strive to eliminate barriers to rigorous and diverse opportunities. More specifically, objective A expresses that the district will increase enrollment and equitable access to accelerated courses, such as AP, IB, CCP, just as some examples. Historically, our data shows disproportionate, underrepresentation of Black and Hispanic students in these advanced courses in high school. As district leadership, high school principals, high school counselors, and the advanced learning team has been working to identify and encourage students of color who demonstrate AP potential, but who have never enrolled in an AP course or CCP course, we recognize and understand that we can't wait until high school for acceleration to begin. Therefore, to address this big rock in our strategic plan, problem-solving and planning, next steps have already started for implementation in the fall, within elementary school and middle school, and actually, we'll talk about those a little bit later. For middle school specifically, students transitioning from elementary to middle is just a step in moving students into more accelerated tracks, or pathways for learning, as they transition. And this should be true for current middle schoolers, so kids that are sixth transitioning to seventh and seventh transitioning to eighth. Utilizing pathways that promote the practice of looking more holistically at individual students beyond AIG status is already occurring for the accelerated middle school math class course, which is titled Accelerated Math. However, until now, middle school ELA didn't include pathways. That would ensure that we are intentional about looking at each student beyond an AIG label, or students who have been referred to as live-ins. I have problems with live-ins. Had a pause for a second, sorry. But, because AIG identification has been the main criteria for this course, there are students that represent various racial demographics and socioeconomic statuses that are being overlooked. In addition, since the number of students identified as AIG is very disproportionate, it is to be expected that more students of color are not participating in more accelerated and rigorous courses, like the higher-level ELA course. Plus, so pathways have been developed, that is something we worked on as a team, and have received feedback from middle school ELA, similar to those for accelerated math, to start the process of reducing the opportunity gap in this area. It is important to note that with those pathways that have been created and the plans that we're working on, that there will be continuous improvement to refine and revise, and in order for us to continue working for the best interests of all of our children, which is to expand opportunities for children to be challenged and pull out their unlimited potential. As the group collaborated, which consisted of the advanced learning team, lead counselors for middle school and high school, content area directors, and myself, another barrier was highlighted. The barrier raised was the course name. So, limited access, and then the course name was added into the conversation. This was raised due to the implications of limiting access and opportunity to students who are demonstrating not only academic prowess, high-level potential, and or giftness, but are not identified based on a test qualifier as AIG. Also, there has been a misconception that only AIG students should and can be enrolled in this course. So I'm going to pause for a moment and let Ashley jump in, just to share a couple of experi, excuse me, experiences that she had today.
Thank you, Effie. This is something that Effie and I have been working closely with our teams on, and that we are all very passionate about, in presenting more equitable opportunities for all students. As the Director of Advanced Learning, I can assure you, we are looking out for our identified students, but it is also our job to advance learning for all students in the district, period. And our team has the capacity to do that. We'd love for you to come to one of our meetings, it's quite interesting. But what, the experience that Effie's talking about, before the meeting, this is very raw, because it just happened, before the meeting, we're sitting over there, and I had two emails from parents of kids going into sixth grade, that said, "I need to get my child tested because I need them to be in accelerated courses in sixth grade." And immediately, my heart dropped, and I thought, there's such a large misconception out there. And part of it may be the course name, which is why we're bringing this to you today, such a misconception, that because it's called ELA AIG, that you have to be AIG when you go into this class. And that is not true. We have a form that parents can complete to request the class. Parents, a lot of parents do not know this, some do, but some don't. Teachers can recommend students through our new pathways form that Effie was just speaking about. We are collecting multiple data points on students to make sure we're setting them up for success, and recommending the correct students. But just as we sat here before today, we realized parents do not know this, and they think that their child has to go through more testing. One parent, the child had made a five on the math EOG, and the parent had been told they had to have testing to have the accelerated class in sixth grade, which we all know state legislation says no, that child automatically goes into that classroom. So we have some large misconceptions out there, that Effie and I are working to get information out to principals, to staff, to make sure those things are clear. So, we've met with various stakeholders, talked through some of the issues, they definitely realize the value in what we are trying to do. Everyone sees, on our advisory council, I had two parents on there that said, "This is my child you're talking about." One said, "My child missed these opportunities because they weren't labeled AIG." So, their request was just look at multiple data points, to make sure these children are going in the right classrooms. So we are definitely doing that. We are taking in teacher recommendations, and making sure we do that in a way that teacher bias is not a part of it, because we know that sometimes you can't see that potential. Sometimes kids that have potential don't show it, and we have to get it out of them. A concern here listed, AIG students need to continue to be taught by AIG-certified teachers. We are working now to make sure, it is in our AIG plan, that AIG students should be taught by AIG-certified teachers. That's not happening everywhere, but we are working as a team to make sure that can happen. I'm working with Dr. Roseborough and Effie on a partnership with High Point University for our Inspire 340 schools for gifted certification. We also have an AIG Canvas course that is self-paced, that teachers can take through my department, and then take the praxis to get gifted certification added to their license. So we have support built in to help with this. Another concern that comes up is, well, then you're not going to be supporting my child that's AIG or HAG certified. We absolutely are going to support those students, but we're going to support all students that deserve the same opportunity. The course curriculum rigor and expectations remain the same. We are not watering these classes down. We're actually in conversations with all the content teams about how we can help support the work they're doing and further that work. So that couldn't be further from the truth. So, that couldn't be further from the truth. We know that we must have intentional supports for these teachers, because this may be a student's first chance being challenged, and we know what some kids do when they're challenged, they may shut down. So, we have PD that we're going to have planned for these teachers on mindsets, on visible thinking routines that encourage things such as inquiry-based learning and Socratic seminar. We have strong PD supports that will be in place. Also, we're going to monitor these students and track their data to make sure we are making the right decisions. We kind of consider next year a pilot year with watching these students and making sure we're making the right decisions for them. So, we know that intentionality is key here. Couple of other points, we want to make sure, this is something we're both very passionate about, and I know Superintendent McManus is as well, that we're making decisions on student needs, not numbers and how they work out for classes at schools. So, that's a big mindset shift that we have two courses of accelerated because that's how many teachers we have that can teach it. No, if we have three courses of kids that need it, we need to offer it, but our department needs to support with PD. So, we know that this is a change in mindset for some, because it's been a misconception for so long, even though it could be done, and we're ready to support that change by working together and working with the content teams. Also, we are building our lift opportunities. Effie mentioned live-ins, and we both hate that term, like, what is a live-in? You know, we have lift students that we're working to lift up, and that's a much better term than the live-ins, because if you live in, then that means you can be put out, right? Okay? That's not okay. We want to lift our students, so we are encouraging and providing support for lift. And also, we have our catalyst positions that we're able to put in at least half an AIG catalyst position at each elementary school to start this from the ground up. As Effie said earlier, it's not enough, we're doing some work with AP, but that's not a start, you have to start from the bottom up and build it across the board. So, we're truly working in elementary, middle, and high schools to make sure that this happens, but we did not want the name of a course to stop our work, because when you see ELA AIG, that says AIG students, and it shouldn't be that. So, that is that is why we're bringing this recommendation to you. And Effie's going to share some work that's being done in other districts, and then I'll share a couple of points quickly with you about Haynes.
Yeah, so we'll keep this moving right along. So, it is important to note that other large districts have already taken the step to, either they didn't have it at all, ELA AIG, or if they have classes that are just solely for AIG, they're starting to move away from it, or look at it, look at the way they offer courses in middle school very differently. And so, here are just some of the ones that I reached out to, looked at their course guides to get some understanding of what they're doing and how they're meeting the needs of all of their students. So, in Wake County Schools, all kids are a part of English Language Arts. However, they do offer a singular elective that is a more accelerated course called Honors ELA. It is not restricted to AIG students. Their belief and their focus is about acceleration for all, and so not only do parents have choice, but students have voice in saying, "I want to be in that more accelerated course" versus just solely based on teacher decision or a one-day test score. In Charlotte Mecklenburg, they also call their more accelerated class Honors ELA, again, so that we are not having the misconception that only AIG are welcomed in an accelerated classroom. Chapel Hill Carboro, everybody is English Language Arts, and so they have a heterogeneous mix of AIG students along with other students who are not identified as AIG in their English Language Arts class, and the AIG teacher actually co-teaches with another ELA teacher. It's their model. The last two models that I want to talk about and then I'm going to bring Ashley back, is that in Guilford County Schools, they do Language Arts Advanced, which is the recommendation that we're bringing forth tonight. But the other thing that they do, because we also thought about the HAG kids that are at Haynes, and recognizing that if you're highly academically gifted, which is a whole different score level, that we need to make sure we're also accelerating those students too. And so, what Guilford and Durham Public Schools has done is that they offer English One, and it's only for eighth grade. And so, in Guilford, they call, instead of saying HAG, they call it VSN, Very Strong Needs. And they have two schools where VSN students actually attend, and they're given the opportunity, it's not a requirement, but it's an option for them to be able to take English One, which is a high school class, and get a high school credit. In middle school, now Wake County also offers the same thing, but they also offer other elective, so if a student went into ninth grade and they took English One, they can take an advanced critical thinking literacy course, and then in their sophomore year actually take English Two. So, there are other options and things that people are doing, but the one key is that they, that district, and in thinking about ours, is that it really creates a barrier when we have a course named ELA AIG, and then that misconception is that if you're not AIG, you cannot, that's the only way that you can be in the course. And so, we want to definitely shift that mindset, and we want to begin to open up opportunities for acceleration for students who should be in those accelerated classes as well. And so, Ashley's just going to kind of wrap us up with talking about some other visions that we have.
So, for our HAG students at Haynes, we know that this threw up some red flags. I know Ms. Willard has spoken often with Effie about this, and we want to define that we recognize that HAG needs are very unique and very different. One of the things that Ms. Willard and her ELA department have asked to do is to bring English One, so they were ahead of the curve before we even got this feedback. So, I know that she's writing a proposal for that, and my team, as well as Melissa Agee's team, are going out to Haynes to discuss some other ideas that we have as well as the English One class, to really raise the level of rigor for those students. It's very hard to go ahead and say, "We're going to offer English One and English Two." Could those kids handle it? Absolutely, I've seen the writing. However, you then look at, they're going into an English Three class in ninth grade with juniors and seniors. So, there are so many other options that we can offer them, and we definitely want to put those on the table, and we're talking about, there's the possibility of some creative writing, some technical writing, some debate-type things. So, we're going out this summer to speak with them about their vision. We know the first step is English One, because that's not been on the plate. Math One has been, but English One has not. So, that is our starting point, but I want to make it very clear that we are not losing focus of those student groups as we continue this work. We can do work for all students, and that's our intention.
And I think the other piece too, that I would just like to chime in with the professional development, it's not about, we want to make sure as we accelerate kids, that we're taking them deep into the standard, so we're not leaving gaps in their learning. And so, sometimes when we think about acceleration, it's about teaching two or so many grade levels above, but then there's so much that they missed prior to that. And so, it's important through the professional development, the work with teachers, that we are helping them to delve deep and help go deep with the standards versus scratching the surface and going fast and there are gaps in kids' learning, because that ends up hurting them. Unlike Chair Woodbury, teaching at a college level, I've seen too often kids that will get complex texts and really struggle with it as a college student, or have difficulty writing during an argumentative writing piece, because there are holes, there are gaps. And so, we want to make sure that we also, as we accelerate kids, don't leave them with gaps in their learning. And so, with that, this is our recommendation, as it aligns to goal two, and more specifically, Objective A, is to recommend changing the middle school ELA AIG course to Language Arts Advanced. It will not, kids who are already enrolled, AIG students that are enrolled, and as principals and counselors and teachers are looking intentionally at students and enrolling those students in those classes, by name change, it does not remove them from the course, and it definitely does not change the curriculum for the course. The actual, if approved tonight, would not change effectively until July one, so just to let you know that as well.
Ms. Crowley?
Yes. How did you land on the Language Arts Advanced name as opposed to Honors ELA? And two things I'm thinking of is, Honors aligns more with what we use for advanced class in high school, so I like the consistency in terminology, and the other one also leaves out English.
Yeah, so, one of the things, what we looked at to see is what courses are already recognized by the state and where we already have course codes. And so, Language Arts Advanced was one of the ones that came out, and also with Honors too, and as the committee was talking, this was kind of the one they landed on, but, you know, we are very open in working with the board as we think through changing, if it is the vision of the board to say Honors, because it aligns more with advanced classes in high school, then there are, the course code is available for that as well.
Mr. Brian?
So, to the sort of Honors point, I think my issue with that is that in high school, an Honors designation also carries quality point changes. It's not like in middle school, you could potentially take, you could take like an Honors course, but you wouldn't, because GPAs don't exist in middle school, it's not, you're not getting that credit.
Correct.
But, so to the point about, that you made about potentially for the HAG students taking the English One, that was one of the things that I was thinking that you mentioned, is that when I was in eighth grade, before they changed it to like the maths, it was like Algebra One, like I took Algebra One in eighth grade, and so in my head, I always wondered why I didn't have the opportunity to take English One as well. So, I think that that's, to me, something we should definitely do if we can. But I wanted to just, so this is a change, the recommendation has changed from what it was earlier, because I thought, when I looked at the materials earlier, it said accelerated, not advanced.
I think it says Language Arts Advanced, but I can double check.
Okay. Well, I just want to, I just want to make sure it, the recommendation is advanced.
It is advanced, yes.
Yeah, I mean, because to me, there were, I had some questions if it was accelerated, yeah.
Got you. And I think we have interchanged the language in our conversations with accelerated math, that it probably has come up in some documents, not intentionally, but.
Ms. Bramer?
Thank you. I like the Language Arts Advanced for like sixth and seventh grade, but I am still wondering why English One is not offered as an eighth grade. I'm a parent of two students that went through the system, and they had Math One, and I would, I mean, I know they are interested in taking English One, because they know that, you know, their math is already one year ahead. They want their English to be matched, you know, because it's a core course. In the end, they can still end up with the same AP, so it doesn't matter, but it really does to them, they feel like they're accomplishing something when they're doing Spanish One or French One, or in some, they're getting a high school credit for language, they're getting a high school credit for math, but not English.
We have discussed that, we just discussed it last week with Melissa Agee over secondary ELA, and Math One, because the math legislation was already in place, and the English One has just never been brought down. So, it's honestly about opening up the conversations and getting everything approved for it, because everything was already set in place for Math One. So, we're opening the doors now to that conversation. So, I think it's the right way to move forward, and we would really like to see how our HAG population does with it, so that we can adjust as we need to, because that's never been offered in our district to eighth-grade students. We felt like that would be a good pilot, would be to see how they do with it and then be able to move forward.
But remember, they're also getting a foreign language credit, so they're not getting their own native language credit if they are English speakers, but they're getting a foreign language credit, so that, for them, it's just not, it's a disconnect.
It makes sense for us to be able to do this.
Well, yeah, sure it does, because I mean, every child is gifted in a different area, and so to get credit, high school credit for math, when you're, maybe your strong point is, is English and Language Arts, so, yeah. So, I think that that's, I think that's definitely something we need to look at. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, ladies.
Thank you so much.
We have two action items. First, we need to consider for full board approval the CTE local application.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? All right, that passes, great. Our second action item is considered for full board approval, that's a tongue twister, middle school ELA name change, and that name change would be what you showed us right now, right, Ms. McMillan?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, those two pass, thank you. Ms. Mott singer, Policy Committee.
So, I am going to have to leave very shortly, so I'm going to have Alex lead Policy Committee tonight, and thank you, I just need to get home.
All righty. So, we will begin this evening with our Item A, which is a Policy 3250.2, discussion of student fees with Ms. Jenkins.
Good evening. I'll be very brief this evening, because I know it's getting a little late in the hour. There are really only two points I wanted to highlight for purposes of our discussion tonight with the student fees policy, since it's been reviewed a couple of times. The first one, and I think probably the one that's garnered the most discussion and attention, is the change in the technology fee. We are no longer recommending a $20 technology use fee, and so that has been stricken from the recommendation. But what I have done is just clarified the replacement costs, which was a part of the previous version, and that's also part of the Technology One-to-One Use Agreement that Mr. Sherrill talked about last time, and I referenced that for any other repair costs, because now if a device is broken maliciously, you know, there's accidents that happen that we'll cover, but if it's some sort of malicious break of the device, or something is theft, or there's some negligence involved, there will be repair costs associated, and those are also outlined in the agreement as well. So, that's the first update. The second update is just to let you know that we're not recommending a change in the athletic fee. I did ask Mr. Sullivan, who's the District Athletic Director, to do some research around some of the surrounding counties and what they charge for the admission fees, and the other counties that he researched in this area, as well as other counties that he was able to get responses from, their fees are fairly consistent, in fact, in most cases, those fees were six or seven dollars, depending upon the sport, and the student fees were the same. So, it was one fee regardless of whether you were a student or an adult. And so, we actually are recommending a reduction in the student fee for our policy, because there is, you know, an ongoing need with having a year where athletics looked a little different, you know, the gate fees go to cover the security fees that are paid for out of the gates, as well as other, you know, other expenditures that the athletic program needs. And so, we are recommending that the adult fee remain the same, but that there be a new reduced student fee. Any questions?
I wondered if, do we, I mean, you know, some of the single moms or something may have two or three children, you know, that are doing something with this. Do we like maybe have any type funds available for any of these kids that might need some help on this?
Not at the district level, but I would, I'm almost 100% certain that at the school-based levels, if there's concerns about that, that they will work with their families to make sure that they can participate in their child's athletics.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Jenkins? No?
Thank you.
Thank you. We have, there's one action item, and that is to consider for full board approval, Policy 3250.2, for student fees, is there a motion?
So moved.
Oh, I didn't say the members of the committee, that is myself, Andy, Deanna, and Marilyn.
So moved.
All right, all those in favor? That passes.
Thank you, Board Member Bohannon. We do have new business, it's 9:48, so I can pretty much do the math and determine that we're going to go beyond 10:00 PM per policy, I think 9,000, no board business should be, no board business can be voted on after 10:00 PM unless the chair waived that time restriction, which I need to do so, because we must go in close. we must go in close to deal with personnel issues that have some time date restrictions. So I'll go ahead and let the board know, but we will work as quickly as possible to get through the new business and close. So the first discussion item, sorry, it's, it's getting late and I'm fighting an old cold, so. The first discussion item is an agreement with transition to teach participants by Dr. Tina Lumpton, our executive director of teacher effectiveness.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Woodbury, Vice Chair Calvert Hayes, members of the board, and Superintendent McManus. I'm excited to be here tonight to talk with you about this wonderful opportunity that we have for our teacher assistants. So we have created a partnership with Winston-Salem State University. So over the next three years, we are going to see about 40 teacher assistants go through various licensure programs to become licensed teachers. We know that our teacher assistants are amazing. They are invested in our schools and invested in our communities. And, you know, we wanted to look for ways that we can invest in them and provide them opportunities to extend their desires to become teachers. So we have been working with the Winston-Salem Foundation as well in looking at some grants that we have for our teacher assistants and repurposing some of that grant money to go into licensure for our teacher assistants. So this first cohort that we have is going to take about 18 months to earn their master's degree. They are focusing in special education for this first round because based on conversations with our HR department, as well as our instructional services department, we see a large need for exceptional children teachers. That is a hard to staff position as well as has large numbers of vacancies across the district. So we have gone through the process of evaluating teacher assistants that applied for this program, and we have 15 that have accepted the program and that will start next week on Monday in their first class. They are jumping right into things. So overall, tuition is around $6,000 for the full program. Winston-Salem is covering 75% of that tuition through the agreement that we are going to conduct with our partners and the participants. They, the employees will pay for about $2,800 of the tuition. We felt that it was important that they also have some investments in this program as well as us investing in them. In this agreement, we are asking that the teacher assistants work in our Inspire 340 schools or low performing schools for at least three years after they achieve their master's or bachelor's degrees. Next year, our focus will be bachelors in elementary education and secondary STEM, same rationale for special education, hard to staff as well as need for vacancy. We do not have a focus yet for the third cohort because we want the new data to come in and to make that decision closer towards that cohort starting. So we have received $200,000 from the Winston-Salem Foundation in some, you know, partnership and work that we have done with them, and we're very thankful for that partnership with them, as well as the Z. Smith Reynolds Foundation, who really kind of started this work for us in this agreement several years back with $50,000 towards this fund. So again, overall, we're looking to invest in 40 teacher assistants over the next three years. And then again, each of those cohorts will then invest back in us for three years of their time. And obviously, we hope that they would extend that and stay with us for much longer after that agreement. Some of our candidates for this first go around, we have Ms. Adequae, Ms. Baker, Ms. Conrad, Mr. Crouch, Ms. Crumpton, Ms. Davis, Ms. Goldsmith, Mr. Jackson, Ms. Lowry, Mr. George Moore, and Mr. Jonathan Moore, Ms. Taylor Holden, Mr. Webb, Mr. Westermoreland, and Ms. Youssef. So that is our first cohort, and they will become our next round of special education teachers.
That's great. And that, that's our maximum number we could have in this cohort, correct?
We, to try to have equitable rounds, we're looking at about 15 in each cohort.
Awesome.
Any other questions? Perfect.
Thank you. The next discussion item is the Lansing Drive sublease agreement by Darryl Walker, our Assistant Superintendent for Operations.
I can be very brief on this one, I promise you. I, I discussed it kind of briefly, kind of got ahead of myself a little bit in, in the original conversation. That sale did go through today. And so we are working on what that future location looks like at this time. And so we'll be coming back to you with what that plan looks like over the next couple, couple of months or so. But we, at this point, have a two-year window to get out. We have, I have a fueling agreement in place with the county. We'll be fueling all our maintenance vehicles, driver's ed vehicles at the maintenance facility on Liberty Street that's owned by the county. So I just want more information than anything at this time.
Thank you. The last discussion item is the substitute teacher staffing and management vendor with Andrea Gillis, our chief financial officer, and Jevlyn Bonner Reed, our chief human resource officer. I think Ms. Bonner Reed is not here tonight, however.
Yep. Ms. Gillis should be in the room any second.
Okay.
She has some ideas.
Chair Woodbury, would it be out of order to go ahead and vote on the other two items we've heard on in a sense of time?
If you want to take my word.
Is that stronger now?
Okay. Um.
Here we go.
Oh, no.
I thought Darryl was going to take longer.
She, she thought Darryl was going to take longer because, yeah, he set precedence tonight about.
Right. I was like, Darryl will be up there for a minute, so I got some time.
He's getting a lot of trash talk tonight.
Okay. So Jevlyn's on vacation this week, so I am doing the presentation for the substitute management system. So Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools has experienced decreased substitute teacher fill rates during the pandemic. And so we wanted to, you know, do, we had an RFP to seek, to finance substitute system, substitute management system vendor. So to improve student learning outcomes and coverage for teacher absence, HR and finance are seeking approval to select ESS as the substitute teacher staffing management system and management system vendor to achieve the following outcomes. I'm sorry.
Just breathe.
Okay. Substantially increase the substitute teacher fill rates from more, from the more recent rate of approximately 60 to 70% to a target rate of 98%. To recruit and retain highly trained substitute teachers to decrease learning loss, improve the process for recruiting and retaining substitutes, provide customized training, I mean, customized recruitment of substitute teachers, provide additional training and support to all schools, and to increase substitute teacher effectiveness, in addition to standardizing the substitute teacher experience across the school system. So we had an evaluation team that consisted of Jevlyn Bonner Reed, myself, Deion Jenkins, Teterica Parks, who's our Director of Recruitment and Retention, Shonda Holmes, who's our Budget Director, John Mann Jr., who's our procurement services manager, Susan Oken Slifko, who is our substitute teacher coordinator, Frances Jandell, who's our Senior Human Resource Specialist and incoming substitute teacher coordinator because Sue is retiring this week. So our proposal profiles, we had three vendors that we, that we, that submitted RFPs. Edge of Staff was the first vendor. Their cost was 28% of the gross payroll plus the $18,000 for the yearly frontline subscription. They had of zero North Carolina District partnerships and they didn't have, did not have any local connections. The next vendor was ESS. Their, their gross, their cost was 29% of the gross payroll. They had five North Carolina District partnerships. And the, the operations manager is located in Winston-Salem and has a child in our district. She graduated from Reynolds High School and will provide four additional staff members that will be recruited locally, that will be housed in our HR department. Kelly Education, their cost was 30% of the gross payroll. For Kelly Education substitute, source substitutes, which means if they found a substitute, it was 30%. If they used our existing substitutes, it was 27%. They have six North Carolina District partnerships. The sales managers at Winston-Salem native and graduated from Parkland High School, and they're, they would provide up to 12 additional staff members that will be regionally recruited. Next page. So the evaluation criteria were company details and references. I won't read all the, the verbiage there. That was 5%. Management services was 30%. Technical elements was 30%. Startup and transition plan was 15%. And the financial proposal, which is the cost, was 20%. Those were our, that was, this was the rubric for our evaluation. So the reason why we selected ESS was because they had a four-week customized implementation plan. They were the only vendor that came forth with an implementation plan, and they could implement this within four weeks. They had in-depth training led by selected Winston-Salem, they had in-depth training that would be led by staff, and they also had local staff located in Winston-Salem. They utilized current absence tracking system, which is frontline. They had a unique recruitment strategy. They had a strong presence in North Carolina. They had a data management system that would drive decisions for schools in the district regarding absenteeism. They had a referral program for all substitutes and employees that would pay those people, you know, anybody who referred to sub would get, you know, a small stipend. They had a yearly investment of $10,000 into district determined initiative, so they would provide $10,000 for us to determine what we wanted to do with it as some kind of district initiative. They trained virtual substitute teachers, and they would also provide virtual substitutes for those hard to teach courses, like a Chinese teacher was out, they would provide a virtual teacher that taught, that was a certified Chinese teacher, and they would also provide a sub for the classroom to manage the classroom. And that virtual teacher would be free of charge. So that was, that was key for us.
That's good.
They had an incident portal to track all and resolve all issues. They had individualized principal and financial secretary support, and they had surveys to acquire feedback about experiences with substitutes and principals, and they had a formal process for substitute teacher evaluations. So the recommendation is that we select ESS as the substitute management system partner and begin implementation process on July 1 and launch by the first day of school. Are there any questions?
So Ms. Gillis, could you, so the four additional staff members would be, I'm just, I'm assuming could be utilized to basically manage.
Right. Manage the subs, you're right.
And then the 29% of gross payroll, is there like a ballpark? Can you ballpark that?
It was about 1.4 million. That was the cost we were thinking it was going to be based on the number of subs that we want to hire.
Okay.
And we were going to use the ESAR funds to fund that, to fund that, you know, we have the sub funds already in our budget. We would use that, those funds, as well as the additional 1.4 in ESAR funds to pay the contract.
Okay. And which, so this is, okay, given that, kind of parse that out, because I think to some, it might, we can't, we're not funding the positions direct, like, because I think when people talk about ESAR funds and our use of ESAR funds, I think we tell people we can't fund positions with ESAR funds, so like, kind of like.
I mean, we can fund positions with ESAR funds. We, we, but we're funding positions that are, we're going to address COVID with ESAR funds.
Right.
Those are the ones we're going to add in our budget, the ones that are going to address COVID. We can't just move all of the locally funded people to ESAR.
Right.
Or we can't use that to pay bonuses or salaries.
Right.
Of the salary increases.
Thank you.
But we will use our ESAR funds to pay this 30% markup, the 29% markup for the ESS vendor, but we have the budget, we have the funds locally for the sub pay.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Awesome. Are there any other questions?
Thank you.
All right.
We have three act, four action items. The first action item is to consider approval for the transition to teach scholarship agreement.
Move approval.
Second.
If there are no question or discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. The second item is to consider approval of the Lansing Drive sublease agreement.
Move approval.
Second.
There are no question or discussion, all in favor? Motion passes. The next, and I'll say Deion that, you saw, okay, thank you. The next item is to consider approval of the substitute teacher staffing and management vendor recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
If there are no further question or discussion, all in favor? I'm thinking you opposed, okay. And then the last item is to consider approval of the custodial contracts.
I have one question. Do I have to move to approve first?
Yeah. Someone, yes. I need a sec, I need a motion in a second.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Okay. Any question or discussion?
Okay. This is really picky. This is a little bit. On page 177, under the contract cleaning specifications, I would like to see under restrooms, I just noticed it said scrub and deep clean bathroom floors and walls only two times a year. I think it needs to be at least monthly. I mean, that's picky, but.
There's Lauren.
Let's see if Lauren's out of breath. Let's, let's compare Lauren to Andrea.
Just so you know, I was a former college athlete, but I'm a little older and I'm still out of breath. What is your question? I'm sorry, that 30-second delay is killing us.
It's, it's, it's just picky. It's a little silly thing, but I was just looking at the janitorial cleaning specifications and under restrooms, it's got, you know, what they are going to be required to do, and it said scrub and deep clean bathroom floors and walls two times a year. Shouldn't it be monthly or more?
So that's a, so it's a deeper process. So I got to breathe. Dear Lord. So on a daily basis, they are going in, they are using scrub brushes, they are doing those things to mitigate issues, but that twice-a-year process, they're actually coming in possibly pressure washing to get any kind of grit out of tile, out of the grout, those kinds of things. So it's just a deeper process to guarantee that that deeper is done twice a year.
Okay. At least, okay.
I'm sorry.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor?
Yeah.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is announcements, there are two announcements. Absolutely congratulations to all of our 2021 Winston-Salem Forsyth County School graduates. And thank you to the board members who attended the graduations and definitely our superintendent, who I think attended every single one of the graduations with Dr. Pratt, and I know Dr. Cato, just, you know, very attentive to the needs of our students. So congratulations again to them and their families. On June 22nd, 2021, our last school board meeting of the year at 5:30 PM. Of course, will be our regular board meeting. And I need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
There are no question or discussion, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Go into close. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us on your school channel, Table Two.